Statutes that are on the books. Because this state has, it's 1859, February 14th, 1859, has a lot of ordinances, statutes on the books. Some of them are a little arcane, and in many cases, people don't know about them. And so, what if we could do all of that as a team, as a community, with all the public entities, these private nonprofit, working together to strive for that vision? With that, I've got a five-page memo that Jordan and I both forwarded about it. So I'm going to just, there are five questions that were presented in the staff report, which I think were excellent. I do support the notion of a special district, but I would propose that the council and city look at ORS 190, which provides two or more public entities, could be a city, could be a fire district, could be a school district, could be a community college, could be the state authority, could be the federal government, or any entities, departments that are among the book. So I'd suggest the creation of an ORS 190. And there are several pages devoted to this, including potential partners. One of the unique elements of the ORS 190 is, it's been around since, I think, 1967. There are in excess of 65 different entities. I first learned about it in about 2006. When the rule that the cities of Mauna and Independence, like Sandy, were not exactly satisfied with their internet connectivity, telephone service, TV service. So they joined forces then with what's called MITF, the Mauna and Independent Network, created a whole new board. They do not have the ability to raise taxes, but they can charge for services. And so MITF has been around, they put a fiber optic loop down to what like Sandy, maybe about 15, 12 years ago. There are numerous examples of ORS 190. And so I'm not going to go through all the potential. But one thing that's very interesting is that you have to be a public organization or corporation to participate in any partner. You can have as many as you want. Nonprofit entities can be executive non-voting members of the board directors. Why is this important? I think that the city and the Oregon Trail School District, covering the entire expanse, at least of the school district, from just over the crest of the Cascades at Government Camp, all the way at least to Boring, might even push it to the Willamette River, invite Clackamas County to be a party to it.
Mr. Anderson, you're starting to come to the end of your line.
Okay, yes, I am. So I would encourage you to look at ORS 190, and there are all sorts of details there. Thank you, Barry. One important element of this in relationship to the community campus, I visited today to verify that the city of Sherwood, for 21 years with the YMCA of Columbia Willamette, the city bought land, built a structure, and for 21 years, the YMCA of Columbia Willamette has managed and operated a recreation center with an aquatic center, and zero additional tax numbers. That's zero for reinducts. No, it's zero, no additional tax numbers. That's another vehicle that I would encourage you to look at. And finally, I support the notion of a community plan.
I hate to do this to you, so we're at the end of time. I coordinated it on, and then we'll have our discussion, then, I don't think we're real, I mean, we're talking about our future plans here tonight, but there'll be future opportunities for sure. Thank you for the conversation. Thank you. Okay, still open for public comment, if anyone else would like to make a statement. Okay, thank you, everyone. Seeing that, I am going to go to new business, the Parks Master Plan. Jordan?
Great. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So your business item tonight is approving the selection of a consultant for the update of our Parks and Trails Master Plan. So we're requesting the council to authorize staff to enter into an agreement, and that would be with ESA for those consultant services for the update of the plan, for a proposed cost of $106,000, 106, 400, 106,000, $106,000 for the Parks Master Plan update. So the Parks Master Plan hasn't been updated since 1997, and this has been a council goal within our broader category of goal setting of updating many of our master plans that are due for an update. We received four proposals for the planned update, and we had a selection committee that include Kathleen Walker, Don Robinson, thank you for being here tonight, Kelly O'Neil, Tanya Richardson, Nancy, who couldn't be here as well, who was her former community services director, is helping the city with managing this project, which we're thankful for. So they reviewed all the proposals. The highest-ranked firm was ESA, and a bonus was they were also the lowest proposed fee. And they were, their proposed fee of $106,000 was also about, within the range that we estimated. I think we were looking between $100,000 and $150,000 for this type of plan. The next steps will be for staff to work with the consultant on developing the scope and the agreement based on the request for proposals. And then, the estimated timeline is that we should have an updated plan by the end of the summer next year, which is pretty aggressive, but we have confidence that this is the right team to do that. And the consultant's proposing to get started right away after the notice to proceed tonight. So with that, we're asking for the council's authorization to enter an agreement with ESA for consultant services for the update of the Parks and Trails Master Plan. Happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. One, when looking at bids, and you always see, it's nice to have some around each other, just not have one lowball and all the rest higher, because something got missed in a bid, but this is kind of the reverse effect.
Yeah.
You know McKenzie, the group McKenzie, and done a lot of projects, what, why, I'm curious, why is there so, I mean, you know, more than triple the amount of this one or a different one there? Are we missing something in the bids, or are we, are they so busy that they do have a high number and we've already to them, and great?
I don't have the answer in any detail, except for, you know, they've worked with us in the past, and I know they are pretty busy in Portland. They've really expanded their services in Portland as a full-service firm with engineering and architecture and other things within their scope. So maybe they just, you know, thought they might be one of the only proposals, or...
Did you have a follow-up? Oh, my other follow-up was that I know several years ago in council, we went towards $100,000 for a master plan for mining Sandy River Park, and Bornstedt, three of them for that dollar amount. See, so many years later, inflation and all, that 106,000 is pretty much close to that hundred grand. Recovered the entire thing, I'm quite surprised, pleasantly surprised.
Yeah, I mean, each park does need their own detailed master plan, as you get into the details of, like, say, for Sandy River, where those trails are going to go, and what are the different elements of that park, wetlands, different trails, you know, shoreline and stuff like that. But this will give us the big picture, and where we make investments in the future, and looking at our inventory and conditions. Now, did we complete one for, so we have Bornstedt, we have, do we have one for mining?
We have kind of some more, more like blueprint level, because we wanted to be able to go to a contract right away. And then we have the plans for Sandy River.
Yeah, Kevin, you had talked about, in conversation about the planning or the valuation process, and in that relation, I looked at the websites of both Angelo and ESA, which are the two that are closest from one and two account. Looking at ESA, they look like they're pretty slick. They did a lot of planning and huge projects. I saw California, I saw the kind of projects that would be many millions of dollars of planning. And I'm looking at the Angelo, more of a local folks, more of a smaller, I noticed at least they had a couple of projects in their website that included some park kind of projects, which led me to think that they have some of that kind of experience. And quite frankly, I've been through a couple of plans where we've got millions of dollars worth of proposals, and we can't afford them. So I'm thinking, help me to feel comfortable about ESA versus Angelo, because it looks to me like ESA is going to come to me with a Taj Mahal that I can't afford. And it's just the way it looks in their website. And they're pretty close in numbers, nine points, pretty close in dollars figures, about $45,000.
I would just answer, keep in mind that they're responding to an RFP that, actually the RFP was pretty detailed. There was a lot of work put into that to have, I would say, even more than usual, a pretty prescribed scope, that each firm is responding to, to that scope, and how much those level, how much that effort will take and the investment. So it wasn't like a blank slate of, propose what you would do to, you know, to come up with a Parks Master Plan and developing our parks. It was, tell us, you know, how you would do the scope of work and how much it would cost. And that keeps the playing field level, and so we can have a more, you know, fair evaluation too.
I'm totally uncomfortable there.
I would add just a couple of things also. First of all, Nancy's running this, so that's not going to happen. We're not getting a Taj Mahal, so, you know, she knows what she's doing. We've got a really good, you know, RFP, the contract that gets signed is going to be very limited. The second thing is, though, I also looked at Angelo Planning Group, which was also combined with Greenworks. And they had done Newport and Lincoln City, a couple other ones, small town, kind of more like Sandy. And then ESA had done Salem and Estes. Yeah, right, you know, I have it in my notes. But they had done, they had done some local, similar to Sandy and bigger than Sandy projects. The thing that kind of did it for us was that the actual, what they were going to do for us was much more fleshed out and specific in the ESA one. They recommend, they made some recommendations of what else we could do. It was just very much more responsive, and then Nancy talked to those folks on the phone. The people at Angelo, when you look at their bios, you can search, if you go to the Angelo Planning Group and search on the word "park," it doesn't even show up in their bios, which kind of scared me. The real folks, the park planning folks in that group is the Greenworks folks, which we've worked with before they did mining amphitheater and a bunch of other projects for us. But the staff on there that they were going to put to the project were folks that didn't have a lot of experience doing parks planning. So that's really, that, and I think her, she did a lot of referrals and all to the customers, you know, to the actual cities that they had done stuff for. She talked to those folks, and she shared with us that by far the ESA folks had the best references. So I feel, you know, pretty confident that, you know, she's going to kind of manage the program on behalf of the city to get what you want, to get us something that we can afford to implement, without...
Counselor, education, they got a lot of these, the seats here, I have some folks.
And, you know, Carl's question, Heather, go ahead.
I do have a follow-up.
So, well, I appreciate the price differentials, the scoring, and it speaks for itself. So ESA not only had the highest score and the largest spread, aside from the bottom spread, there's a 11-point spread between them and Angelo. It just happens, it's a place, matches up with that as well, since I don't have any reservations, trust me.
Counselor Petal?
I would just point the hand if you...
You guys got...
Yeah, I was impressed with the committee's efforts with this, so I certainly appreciate the recommendation, and I'd like to make a motion, except, the motion is to direct staff to develop the scope of work, and enter into an agreement with ESA for consulting services to prepare an amended Parks and Trail system, master plan for the proposed cost of $106,448.16.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion to adopt a plan in a second on the floor.
Carl?
Can I have some discussion?
I was, we have discussion.
Actually, just a follow-up question. Help me to explain to me that Angelo is local, Portland people, and the ESA look like they were outside the state? So what's their location? My question is revolved around is, if we need to talk to them, how are we going to catch up? Are they going to be accessible to us, if the questions in the middle, the end, the beginning of the process? Are we going to be able to talk to them? Okay.
They have a Portland office.
Do they?
Yeah. JLA is local, too.
And the person that Nancy talked to answered his phone at 3:30 on a Friday afternoon.
Oh.
Nancy was...
I don't know.
They're available.
I'm sorry, Counselor, I have to ask you before we move forward on the vote. I mean, is there, do you have some kind of knowledge or anything, if bad change orders happening, or working with this company, or I mean, is there...
Not at all. I'm just, I have gone through a couple of planning efforts in this council, and I just see some of the plans that are landed on our table were unmanageable, undoable. I just don't want to see that again.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's all I'm asking, is I just want to confirm. I know the bulk of the committee, and I know the professionalism and desire to make it right, I just want to confirm. I just don't want to see a plan here.
Yeah, I agree.
Just one last comment. I mean, keep in mind that consultant works for us, and there'll be a committee involved with participating in the plan, and, you know, so they should be responsive to, you know, staff and the community and the council in terms of the work that they produce.
All right, well, we have a motion on the floor in a second. Any more discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by a 69. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we'll move to our work session items. First one is Sandy Community Campus Planning.
Great. Carrie's still figuring out some audio issues, hopefully we get that resolved.
Something else on the agenda you'd like to go to first?
The rest of the items are also work session items. I think this will be, probably be a little bit a longer conversation, and there's probably folks in the audience that are more looking forward to this one. So I'll get rolling on it. I appreciate the public comment, because part of having this meeting, this work session right now, is to talk about the big what. What is the next steps for the community campus, and in particular, whether we move forward with the process to form a special district. You heard some ideas from public comment about a special district, a different model than what we're exploring with the Parks and Recreation District, but given the very, 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 very tight timeline to put something on the ballot for a special district in November 2020, you know, it felt prudent to come to the council and get some input on whether we should at least start that process to get the ball rolling. There's a lot of steps involved with that, a lot of analysis, some expenses that go along with it. And so I think tonight would be a good opportunity to talk about that process, but also talk a little bit more about the vision for the community campus, and how a lot of different elements of the campus kind of intersect, right? And how do we stagger those in an appropriate way to achieve a vision for something special out there? So I'll start with a little bit about that background, special district formation process. And there was a memo in the report from Barry Elsner about that process, who, he's done some analysis on that. It's very high level. There's a lot more detail, obviously, involved with that type of legal process, but, and then also, as I said in the report, there's a lot of different intersection, intersection of other decisions that the council will have to consider as this process unfolds, because the big what are we proposing to the voters? What kind of capital improvements do we want to try to achieve at the same time in developing any further plans? And then considering other options to get to those plans, like a development agreement to develop a portion or all of the property, having the opportunity to finish our facilities assessment and finish our Parks Master Plan, to consider other things that we could do at the campus besides the pool and the recreation center, are all kind of converging at this, you know, this moment over the next couple of years. So the first key question that is most pressing was, should we start the process to form the special district to fund the pool and other recreation services? So, you know, just to revisit some of that background, as painful it might be, we closed the pool in May due to funding shortages. And so the first key question really is, how are we, how are we going to reopen that pool and involve the public in that decision? And one of the ideas, when we talked previously at a work session, was a special district. And there's examples of special districts that are the full, you know, broad spectrum of Parks and Recreation Services, as ORS 266 allows you to do. So I don't know what that is.
Click allow.
Oh, okay, sorry, Greg. Okay. All right, well, there we go. He'll let us know when he's done. So, and so the different, there's, so part of that what is, if we go the route of a special district, are we looking at an aquatic district to fund the operations of a pool? And essentially, that would be a new taxing district for a boundary that this council and a community of volunteers would help set. Could be the city boundary, it could be the Oregon Trail School District boundary, it could be a boundary that we come up with on our own, that makes the most sense for accommodating the most, you know, common users of the pool. Other types of frames, frameworks would be a recreation district. That would, we, we'll see an example of that in Redmond, where they operate the pool plus recreation activities, and I think they have an activity center where they can provide programming, youth sports, camps, and things like that. Then you have the bigger Parks and Recreation districts, like Bend or Tuolton Hills, that not only provide recreation and aquatics, you know, I think Tuolton Hills is the largest one in the state at 200,000 people, and all the parks in Beaverton are owned and operated by the district. That, I would say, is on, you know, on this end of complex and complicated, and considering the intergovernmental agreements and the transfer of assets, and setting the scope and services and what we want this district to provide, versus something a little more quick and easy, and to the core of what, you know, one of the primary issues we have right now is having a pool that's not open due to funding shortages, and that would be like an aquatic district. But as Kathleen aptly pointed out, you only really get a shot at this every once in a while, right? So it's an important question for the council, and ultimately the community, too, is, what's best for the community in terms of funding our pool, but also our recreation services, and parks maintenance, and programming, and who do we involve in that besides just the city of Sandy?
And, let me just add to that, that you only have so much money because of compression and...
Correct, yeah.
So if you do go this direction, and if you're successful in this direction, which would be great, there's your money, though, right? It's over at that point.
But with that, we know, in the public opinion to speak, when we make a decision to close the pool, that we have people from Welch's, London, and Bornstedt who are utilizing the pool, because it's the only one in the area. So I think we would be remiss to not look at including those areas to find a different kind of, you know, after a district.
So the, so special districts, you know, there's pros and cons off, obviously. And I think there might be a conception that you could have a district that is like a county library district that is just, you know, they're to collect taxes, and then the city would ultimately still have ownership. But under the model of a 260, ORS 266, a special district would then have its own board that's elected from the populace, they would hire their own staff, you could probably put in the ballot language some conditions about the relationship it would have with the city, but obviously a little bit tricky on having that appropriate legal language, and there's little drawbacks of that, too, because it limits your flexibility going into the future. And so the advantage is, again, you would have your own tax, that would, property tax, a permanent tax rate on that, on the properties within that boundary to pay for those services. And then, you know, you have a governing board that's focused on just recreation or just aquatics, right, dedicated to that one service. On the other hand, you probably would be increasing taxes for Sandy taxpayers, and also the broader boundary if you choose to go that route. The council would lose sort of that control over setting, you know, a bigger policy and direction on the type of services that the city wants to provide to its residents. You no longer have the ability to allocate resources among departments, because that recreation programming will be outside of the city. So, you know, if, you know, things like compression and things like that, you don't have the ability to kind of move money from other general fund-funded services. So, you know, there's pros and cons to a district, you know, and part of the effort would be, you know, making sure we engage the public to figure out who would be on this board, either three or five new, you know, commissioners of a recreation district, and making sure they're involved in that process. So I talked a little bit about the different options, that's part of what, if we are to kick off this process, getting some of the council input now on how big of a picture do we want to look at, as, especially if we're going to engage with a consultant to help us do the financial analysis, to figure out the tax rate, to run a cost of service analysis, and the cost, the budget for the first years, and things like that. You know, it'd be helpful to know, are we going to look at just in the aquatic district, or we consider a recreation district? And if we're doing that, will we be looking at what we currently do for about a half million dollars a year, and, you know, some youth sports and camps and things like that? Or would we want to think bigger in terms of the amount of recreation we provide? And then, so that's on, that's the first question.
Thank you. Would you prefer your questions at the very end of your presentation, or in the four, or in the five sections?
Yeah. I'm okay either way, yeah, honestly. If it's a question that you think would be helpful as we go along, and is pertaining to that question.
I guess I'll just, real quick, so you mentioned general fund money, we lose our flexibility with moving money around. But our library district, we do donate, we, not donate, we provide money out of our general fund to our library district.
Yeah, yeah.
So would we not be able, if there's insufficient funds in our rec district, would we not be able to donate?
I think you could. You could, absolutely, like, in our governmental agreements, partnerships, and we'd probably end up, in some model, do that, right? Because if it's a recreation district, they're going to need to do their programming within our parks anyways. I mean, you'd have that relationship baked in. I don't know, I don't think there's any state law from cities giving property tax money to recreation districts. I know there is for school districts, but something that would have to...
And then, my memory is in the budget committee that there was money allocated for this project. It's, we do have money in our budget allocated for this research, correct?
We have money allocated for the community campus, which is in urban renewal, that's for capital.
So where are you proposing finding the money that came for the plan?
Yeah, yeah. Oh, that's a great question.
Is this meeting being recorded at all? Because I know there's a lot of interest beyond this room.
Yeah, how are we doing?
I can't get, I can't get the audio to work. I have a digital audio recorder over here, and Greg and I are trying to get it to work.
Which we are recording.
Videoed, but no audio. I'm recording.
Is that tape recorder?
I'm recording it right here.
Oh, great, okay, thanks.
As long as it works, right.
No, good question, Captain, I was unaware of that.
So I'm going to assume that going along is the way to ask questions instead of waiting to...
Sure, yeah.
Size of districts. I've always assumed that within the city limits, we've got a pretty high successful probability of getting a yes quote, especially if we've got this kind of numbers that we've been conversations about, someplace around 10 or something less, or in that ballpark, dollars per household. And as we get larger, fire district, school district, certainly even larger than that, the chances would probably go down in terms of being able to say, get a yes response to that. But we don't know that. So a poll of some kind would probably be called for, I think, if we decided we want to go further, out into the world other than the city. And in my mind, if we get it for a few dollars per household, it'd be pretty easy to say yes, if we could go, let's say, school district. I don't know if that's true, I don't know the calculations, but the difference between my, in my ballpark head says $10 for something in the city of Sandy, district, the city boundaries, a couple dollars if we did school district, might be an easier way to go at it. So a pool, poll, I mean, would be something that might be worth going after, just because it looks like there might be some good thoughts about getting larger. Because we do have people from Brightwood, Welch's, Eagle Creek, all that, who would use the pool. And would probably want to use the pool.
Counselor Schultz, and then Counselor Schwan.
Yeah, the meetings that Counselor Lee referenced, that her and I have held with people, that's one of the very first things that we'll do, is the polling people will start in Sandy, go out in rings from there, and see where we start losing the support, and see, like, you know, maybe, maybe we don't want to go further than school district, but maybe we talk to people in Eagle Creek, and they're weighing in on it, too, or, but yeah, that is the first part of the process, is like, doing that polling by professionals that know what they're doing, and find where the...
Well, I mean, well, yeah, I think it's part of any really strong process, right? We try to determine what the process is going to look like. What she's referring to is, like, someone with some polling experience in the past, is, you do your poll, but then you have your cross-tap, right? That really gets into the nitty-gritty of the demographics, age groups, gender, and all that, but also... But also where geographically you are and helps you, it can help you make some decisions on boundaries.
I'm just not aware that we were have made that decision to pull out, right? I just thought it was left.
Yeah, it hasn't made a big decision, but from our understanding, it sounds like if we want this thing to work really well, we need to.
I'd want to do it very professional. I mean, it helps really in the.
What I wasn't sure of in your report, you were referring to just doing the pool or really looking at the campus at the same time? Making the project large enough so you could continue work on the campus into the future?
Yeah, and that's sort of the next question is how much capital, you know, is the city willing to contribute? Or, you know, going out for a bond at the same time to do something beyond just the pool? Do that aquatic center, the recreation center, actual, you know, build out of the community campus? Where, you know, if you draw the boundaries a little bit bigger, maybe that entices more people to say, oh, well, if I vote for this, I'm going to get a new recreational facility that I'm a member of or something because I pay taxes into this district.
That probably makes sense because there weren't that many people just supporting them themselves.
Right.
Yeah, I was just gonna maybe suggest that we're kind of getting in some of the weeds here. And there's all five points and we're only on point number one. Did I say that without listening to the rest of it? I know I read all of it and so I know what's coming up. And so that makes it a whole other story and then come back maybe with some of that weeds.
Yeah, that's all screwed up. Go ahead, Dirk, you're back.
Okay.
I'm taking my questions written down though.
Oh, yeah, I meant to say, don't ask.
So I'll jump back a couple of slides here. This is super ambitious, meaning this is the sort of the very, very, very rough timeline without doing any sort of, you know, in-depth, you know, project scheduling of how to achieve this before November. Basically, we form that committee immediately and get start getting public involvement. We'll start drafting polling questions. And this is all based on the assumption this committee can work with the council on determining what that scope is and what the what is? Is it aquatic district, recreation? You know, you might have them start that work and come back to you with recommendations. But even then, you know, there's not a lot of room to trip or, you know, delay. Because we're not working off a November 2020 deadline, we're working off a May 2020 deadline. And that's due to the rules in terms of getting this on the ballot, 180 days before the election, a petition needs to be filed with the county. At that point, the city can no longer be a party to any kind of campaigning. So, you know, the city needs to be neutral, city counselors, private individuals can be out there campaigning. But at that point, it would be up to the citizens. The petition process would involve fifteen getting 15% of registered voters within the proposed boundary to sign the petition. So for the city of Sandy, I think we have like 7,000 registered voters. And if you start drawing that boundary a little bit bigger, say the Oregon Trail School District, which is, I think, closer to 32,000 people-ish, maybe more, that number gets bigger and bigger in terms of getting successful verified signatures on a petition. You'd also need to identify chief petitioners that would be leading that effort. And that could that could be city counselors or it could be members of the committee or other volunteers within the boundary. And they're the ones that ultimately file that petition with the county. As part of that petition, we need to have the economic feasibility analysis, which would be the proposed boundary, the tax rate, the cost of service and the and the first year and I think third year budgets. And so that's looking at about a $30,000 to $40,000 effort to do that. So just a word about the process. A lot of times when you see aquatic districts or recreation districts become formed and a proposal on the ballot actually comes from the citizens, it comes from somebody like a friends group or, you know, an interested, you know, community member that gets, you know, other interested community members together and they form this group. They raise funds to to, you know, do things like polling and the feasibility analysis. And they bring that forward through the petition process. In this sense, we're as a city, the ones taking the lead. Not to say that's never been done, but one of the questions I had is any expenses that we incur on this, could we put in the condition of a successful passing of the district? Could we recoup some of the some or all those costs associated with forming that? It sounds like it's a probably, but we'd have to check into it. In the meantime, probably have to spend some money and it would probably be out of contingency or reserves, given that you've seen our budget recently, there's this type of work wasn't in, you know, included in the budget. So that that's the process in a nutshell. Again, very ambitious timeline, another expense, depending on the scope, would be possibly having to get project management help, maybe even from Nancy or other interested community members to help us through this process, just given the capacity issues for managing on such a timeline. Any other questions on this first key question? I I can see that these counselors are changing.
So so I'm I guess I'm curious and recognizing, like you said, what the budget is. If it wouldn't be wise for us to do a poll within the city limits first to see what's.
Excuse me, this is getting really redundant. We did.
I I apologize, this is a conversation and a meeting for council.
Okay, I should have signed the thing. I didn't know this was coming up.
Thank you.
But a poll within the city limits to see what's the feasibility of even passing that would be?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it might be more affordable to it.
My understanding is previous poll encompassed about 250 people.
It was not scientific.
And it wasn't scientific, okay? So so 250 people in non-scientific does not equate a poll. But something that actually gets a good pool so that we have an idea of what we're looking at before we go dropping a lot of money. I I mean, I'll don't get me wrong, I'm all for moving forward with this, provided it's the direction that the public wants to go.
I can also leave.
My question was just about the timeline because my understanding is that not in the November 2020 election, but shortly thereafter, the school district will be going out for a bond. So if we miss the November 2020 opportunity, then we're competing. So I don't know if you've talked to Aaron lately about what their plans are.
They have a school board meeting coming up later this month that I think they're going to talk about sort of their facility planning process. They don't have a date yet set for the bond. I don't think that's, you know, public knowledge yet or they don't have. I know they've started talking about ideas and and starting the process, but nothing firmed up yet. But that is a consideration, especially if the council will consider putting recommending a bond that would have other competing agencies on the ballot. And even a district is an increase in taxes, so, you know, that.
Increases.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, surprise, because that's where I'm kind of at. Some of the conversation is a little different than what some of the thoughts I had. Just thinking about all of the costs it takes to put this thing in, you're saying that it's going to come up with some quite a bit of costs in this thing. How are you planning on going back after the dollars? Would it come from an additional tax or something? Or would it come from a change in the budget, which is kind of where I was thinking it would be? We just spend it out of allocation that would be appropriate. When you're saying go back after dollars, get reimbursed, I'm not sure where you'd go after unless you decide you want to go to other tax.
My apologies, but I think it'd be from the levy or from the district.
Right.
It would just be written into that.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
It could come from the levy.
It would, yeah, they would collect their their property taxes in that first year and part of their budget would be to, right, just give the city a check.
The only question I ask, so on the petitions, one is, I guess we could use paid petitioners. And that's easy, but that are not cities now. And then the second is, is can a separate, you know, a separate political action committee, nothing stops a separate political action committee from being formed. That could go out and work with friends of the Sandy Pool and other advocacy groups to push forward a strong campaign.
Yeah.
And that's kind of what would need to happen after, looks like June. It could form before, okay?
Yeah.
Any reason it wasn't included in the budget?
The.
Yeah, because I mean, this is putting together a path forward for the Sandy Community Campus is a counter goal, right? I'm just a little surprised it wasn't at least a talking point for the budget that we want to make money.
Yeah, I mean, I think at the time we just didn't know the full scope and honestly what it would cost. Whether we could do some of it in-house, how much in-house? You know, we hadn't started exploring what that process really looked like in terms of what is an economic feasibility today? Are we going to do big lots of polling or not? And I mean, even now, it's sort of, it's a range, it could be $30,000 or it can be $200,000, you know, and yeah.
But we picked zero.
Yeah, I think we just didn't know the cost. I think in the past, the city has done this many years ago. Kathleen has probably known.
Three or four times.
Three or four times. The last time I remember was probably about 19, 20 years ago. Was it? And I think it was what the city has done in the past for other things, you just put it on the ballot. It wasn't all the other aspects of the cost, right? You can go through and put it on the ballot for almost nothing in person, like to do the study and all that other things. If you want to do it, like you said, do it right and do it well, that has a cost that is associated to it. But like you said, you know, it could be 30 to 200,000.
I mean, we can do our own, you know, spreadsheet where come up with a tax rate. I mean, there's some stuff we'll have to pay for. It's a minimum of $10,000 or whatever to file the petition or whatever the fee is for the county. Beyond that, there's probably some work that we still will need just to get the records and kind of run the, you know, boundaries and how much, you know, to calculate on that. But I'm I just want to make sure that we don't, we just don't rush through it and set this district up for failure because we don't do it the right way. Or we say, oh, we should have included that or we didn't think about, you know, T-ball leagues and how much that would cost. Or wow, they actually do want to build a recreation center and how are we going to operate that? Because we don't have enough money to do that with the tax rate that we passed, you know? So that kind of feeds into the next question of how much we should be considering at the same time the city contributing towards improvements at the campus. First, again, is the aquatic center. And right now, I'm sorry, it's not ready yet, but having some better cost estimates on what it would take to just do a base renovation of the pool. We have a range right now somewhere around $10 million. Can we sharpen our pencils? Can we do the necessary repairs and maintenance work to have the pool in its current condition only improve to run for another 30 years? We're also then going to do an apples to apples, what would it take to have your current aquatic center or your current pool and build a new one somewhere else on that site? Pretty much the exact same pool, but new with all new things and a better location, I would say. The budget includes $3 million currently for the community campus. And that could include spending on the pool, can include park improvements on more of the rear portion. It could include doing things to the Sandy Net Building, the bunker building or the annex and converting that. You know, demolitions, all that sort of thing. We have the architects also looking at the current gym and what it would take to open that up on a ten interim basis. But preliminary costs are looking at least 50 grand to put in elevators and things like that, which is a little unfortunate, depending on the route that we want to go. If it's interim for five years, great. If it's interim for just two, I don't know. Well, there is one currently, but there definitely needs work for ADA stuff. And so the question really is, you know, if if this is our opportunity to form this district and this district is going to operate an aquatic center, the existing pool or a a bigger community campus center amenity for the public, is this also the opportunity to propose a bond at the same time? And you could do that and you could put it, you know, the bond is contingent upon the district passing, obviously. You know, if the bond passes, but the district doesn't, then, you know, it's defunct. And in that way, you know, back to that idea that the voters are having the opportunity to buy into something beyond just the current, you know, pool in the state that it's in. It's they're voting on becoming a member of their own aquatic center. And the is part of that is the council, you know, committed, willing to commit to the district that would spend $3 million or some other amount in towards that amount to make improvements to the pool as sort of a, you know, a goodwill gesture or something to that effect. Some of these questions are not, I realize, big questions. And and honestly, part of this is if, you know, getting the community involved can help answer some of these questions as they sort of talk through it and dream about what Sandy could be in terms of the district and things like that. Yeah.
So I like what you're doing here. My my question though is, is can this work? My my concern is, is that you're comparing just updating the current pool with a brand new pool that is exactly like the current pool. And my worry is, is or my feeling is, is that we should go out to the community and it goes back to kind of the polling thing to make sure, I mean, we may not even know if, given an option, if this, if the community would would like to have this pool as a new pool, right? Maybe maybe the, you know, the community says, well, actually, we're looking for more of a family recreational fun pool rather than an aquatic center. Maybe the poll tells us, well, because of the Sandy River and youth athletics and teams, we're more wanting a aquatic center, right? And so I just, I guess my worry, so I like the process, but my worry with the process is that I don't know if, even when you come back with those numbers for us, if we're even going to really have a good feel if we're giving the community something that they want. Does that make sense? So can we do this or something like this in conjunction with some kind of community outreach?
Well, I get Carly, do you want to talk for him?
Yeah, it's kind of related to what the mayor's talking about in that. Where do we end up with in this questions? I see these five questions and I see it coming to a place where we need to make some decisions about what what is. But I'm I'm wondering just how we're going to make that decision because I I we can make a decision right now with the the council, but I'm not sure that would be the best way to do that because we need to get the rest of the city, fire district, school district, whatever, favor of it as well. So and some of these questions may not be the right questions if you go to the polling.
Yeah, yeah.
I guess my mind, if what I would like to see, because I agree, I don't think we can answer some of these questions and they're great questions, is is a poll that encompasses, okay, Mr. and Mrs. So-and-so, if your tax dollars were to raise this much, would you support this? If your tax dollars were to raise this much, would you support this? If it were this much, would you support this? Or would you not support anything? And and something that gathers that, because I don't I don't think without that data that we as a group can make a decision on. Because I mean, yeah, my gut is let's go for the full mail deal, let's go for it, right? Because big picture, thinking 50 years down the road, wouldn't it be fantastic? And I agree 100% with what Kathleen said tonight. But again, I just I don't think that this council, I don't I don't feel that qualified to make to make those decisions without that information.
Because I and because I like the new high school, okay?
Sure.
But there's a lot of community members that will tell you that we didn't need a new high school. That's the size and the look and everything of that school. Now, I think you build, you build a facility your community can grow into. I'm kind of a go bigger, go home. But we have constituents, the people we represent out there, right? I mean, I would hate to see council go down the line because a lot of this is, is people say we want a pool. And a lot of this is, is great, if you do want a pool, then we as a community need to collectively decide to pay for a pool, right? And I'd hate to, to your point, I would hate to put something on the ballot, this kind of Taj Mahal. And they say, you know, all we actually wanted.
Was a pool.
Was the current pool, right? And so I would like to know where our community is.
And know and recognize it with the cost.
Because it goes back to, we don't want to put something on the ballot to watch it lose.
Right.
Right, we, I mean, we want to go through this process worth it, that's why.
Isn't there a marketing process in this as well? Because, no, I'm sorry, I hit myself here.
I'm sorry, I just, I forgot on council.
So in my mind, I'm, I know that's hard to believe, but I'll. Is that there is a marketing portion of this one in that do we want to market just for the pool? Do we want to market for the pool and the gym? Do we want to market for the entire? Do we wanna market for the entire community center? And what does that mean? And is there a way to change public participant, part perception of what we're trying to do here? And I think that's something to think about, too, is wanting to just get a poll. Cause I think there are people who don't even know there's a pool in the city. There are people who are just desperate to see the entire thing go. So we're gonna be.
Yeah, I feel like, I agree with what Lori was saying. I don't think we, we can decide just as the seven of us, this sort of stuff. And I think from my understanding, if we do this the right way, if we do it the polling, the professionals, that's exactly what they do. They say, you know, if it's just this pool, will you say yes? If, and then they go on from there. And I don't see how we can really do this without that.
So maybe that's our first step.
Yeah, yeah. You know, honestly, some of these questions are, because if we had more time on, you know, you know, deadlines are, are helpful, honestly, in, in, you know, in terms of achieving, achieving projects.
Not to interrupt, I'm just going back to a conversation you and I have had. Which is, remember, when I was doing political campaigns, I'd have a conference called Tomorrow. We'd be in the field by next week, right? Municipalities run a little bit different. And so we're gonna have to go after an RFP probably for the polling firm. Then we're gonna have to go through a selection process of the questions and the depth and the expense. We're gonna have to go through approval processes for all that. So I mean, I, I have a har-.
What questions are you gonna ask?
And you're right.
While you're doing a community survey, would you ask other questions and take advantage of that?
Right, so I mean, I mean, realistically, if we gave direction to staff tonight, that we want you to start going down the road of investigating a pool and a polling firm and all those things. I mean, we're what? We're, we're three months out from getting results back, it's creeping really quickly.
Paying for it with money that we don't have.
Yeah.
And, and the thing also is, is I'm a little concerned about the timing. If we wait for November, there may be some slowdown in people's opinions. Right now, we get a lot of anxious, anger, and energy, people putting together. And a year from now, more than a year from now, is that energy gonna dissipate? And they're thinking, we don't want even that anymore. Fees and taxes on our list, heck of a pool. So I'm concerned about waiting to.
Well, that's what it is.
So I, I really appreciate the conversation tonight, 'cause this is where we start, right? You have to start somewhere, so tonight, where we're starting, right? And I really like, it's depressing in some ways, the timeline, but not good. Not in a bad way depressing, it's a little depressing, but the idea is, though, it's realization, right? And so we can talk about this next month, but when then we're just one month further down the process, right? And so, and, you know, we are busy doing a lot of things, and so we're, we're at this point. And so being able to kind of come at the end of this meeting tonight with a lot more information than we had before we started, and being able to give more direction in that, where we can start, we can get. But I think it's also the councils that needs to be realizing, too, that we are gonna have to make some decisions along the way. And then we can't just hum and ha and keep thinking about stuff. Cause move things forward, decisions have to be made. And that's what leaders do, we make decisions. And so we have to continue forward on the timeline, stay on timeline, we won't do that. Cause if you look at that, that timeline there, you had one month period, right? Boom, 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 it had to be done, and some of those things, and, and three months, it, it's not a lot. It's there. It is the facts, it's where we are, so, you know, that's where we, that's where we're at, so, anyway.
But I think we're still on the timeline.
Yeah. But if you look at this online, there's three months there.
We have polling.
Yeah, and there's three months there for polling. So it, to me, it's, it's, it's there.
And remember, you don't have to, just once you start the timeline, you don't have to make it to the end of the timeline.
Right.
You get off the timeline at any point, right?
You might end result as a problem.
Right.
You gotta watch the end result.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry.
So I think a couple of facts. We have three million dollars, and we don't know what our community wants at a sufficient enough level to even make a decision. It would be the seven of us deciding for all of the residents, and I don't think that's a good plan. So regardless, we still have three million dollars, whether we're moving forward with this pool, that pool, whatever pool. But the thing we need to know is what our community wants. And when I say what our community wants, we need to know if it's twelve hundred and fifty people that would sign a petition in the city of Sandy, or forty-five hundred people if we extended it out to the school district boundaries to get fifteen percent. And that's just to get a petition, not to get it voted for as well, too. So I think even if we got to the point of getting to a petition signature process, by getting there, by default, we'd actually get a lot of really good feedback and information on if we didn't have the support to move forward with that. We have to have the support to figure out what we're gonna do with the three million dollars of the unit.
I agree with that.
That's where I'm at. Counselor Lee.
I think one place we can save time is, we wouldn't have to do an RFP if it's under fifty thousand, if I recall, or a polling firm that would allow us to move on.
Yeah, we can do a direct appointment.
I will say, your park master plan, RFP, included looking at the city camp, the campus, and, and what we might do there. And so there's some opportunity for using that plan to get the kind of polling information in public, polling in, and, you know, weighing in that you want.
Actually, I'm gonna ask John, you have, what happened when the college failed? What were some things that you would do again differently and make it pass? But we can do this.
He just thinks, thinks for calling that up. Or he called that up for ourselves, too. Yeah, I was, I was the reason, I think, well, if my drawer was still here, I'd have buttons and anything. So we went out for, we've been out for seven different tries since nineteen seventy-four, and failed at each one. So, and I think we've got a fairly diverse district as well, too, if you think of the volume of our district. We've got three campuses within our district. And I think where we've struggled is connecting with the communities. This area has historically voted down bonds, I think more recently, because of turmoil associated with the school, school board. And we're unlikely to see that turn. So I think other areas of our district voted the same as they have before, but they're not enough of the district to make this approved, so. But I mean, we've done polling, we've done economic feasibility as well, too. We did a bit more, two bonds ago, the last one, I'd say, was a bit more rushed. We did not have very much in our pack the second go-around either, so.
But both failed, anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, very encouraging.
Well, I mean, we're talking a totally different, totally different area of the district. The majority of our districts in Multnomah County, at the same time, too, like, we've got a higher percentage of people living in apartments that may not, may or may not recognize value of the college, what it brings, what it provides, and the impact on them. But they may or may not be paying tax. So I, I think there's a number of factors, but our, our district is probably known as one of the most challenging to get voters to approve. And then I think out in this area, we definitely saw substantial failing on both ends. And so my concern, and just to kind of tie this into a response as well, my concern with the comments that you'd made about what we get for this level, what we get, what we get for this level, at the end of the day, I think people wanna pay zero. And I think that's pretty consistent, what we've seen in the voting for our bonds. People don't want to spend much or anything. And so I think when it's tied there, we may get a different response. But that would be for a research firm to, to figure out, not for us.
At the same time, though, if this passes, they will be paying more, right? And so, I mean, that's part of that educational piece is, is if our citizens know, you know, the consequences of our actions, then we're getting, we're getting good data, we're getting good information, we're getting good feedback from our community on how we can proceed. Cause we're supposed to be a representative body at the end of the day.
We still have to get them to vote and approve whatever we put on the ballot. So, and depending on how, how big the eyes are versus how deep the pockets are, I think we'll find out.
Yeah. So as part of that surveying or polling, it's not just, would you support a bond and at what level? You know, and what kind of amenities? And we'll come back with questions, but also the reg, the whole district question, too, is the big, another big question. You know, would you support a district? So, you know, just to complicate it a little bit, there is some analysis that we have to do, 'cause we need to know, we have to do some sort of, you know, some simple math, I guess, maybe more advanced math on what is that, what are we asking people to increase their taxes by, right? To pay for it. And we know, you know, the, the pool was four hundred thousand dollars a year or something like that, in terms of, you know, tax money, you know, supplemented by program fees and stuff like that. And we can, we can kind of do some, you know, big, high-level math to kind of figure that out. But those are some of the questions you kind of have to answer for yourself in order to ask the questions during a poll or survey. So, but yeah, I think, I mean, that's sort of what the direction we're kind of looking for tonight, is just like, what are these first steps? The timeline still does, just to be honest, does make me a little nervous, just knowing that as you engage with the public, you know, and, and do it the right way, and even as you get things towards, moving towards a ballot, what do you ultimately end up putting on the ballot in terms of a vision for what, say, thirty million buys someone, or twenty million buys someone? There has to be some work with the community and with the council, and maybe some architects to kind of come up with that, to help sell the, the idea. Cause visuals and things like that do help, instead of just someone, thirty million dollars, we'll tell you later what you're gonna get, you know? We'll show you when it's built. So, I think, but, you know, this information could be used on a May two thousand twenty-one ballot, or something like that, if we don't quite get there, or decide to hold off, or whatever.
The only problem, I would say, that, that Counselor Lee's pointing about.
Start competing. Yeah, I wanna talk a little bit about, you know, one, talking about visuals. This is what we currently have there at the campus. This is just, you know, your Google Maps aerial, but, you know, one, the great thing about the pool is it's right in the middle, and it's visual, and there it is. The unfortunate thing about a pool, where it's currently at, is it is right there, it's in the middle, and it's right up against the school district's property lines. As the mayor alluded to earlier, and Counselor Lee, the school district is in the early stages of considering, you know, possible improvements to the grade school and other facilities need, needs for the district. So that's something that we would wanna stay involved and engaged with, because anything that we're gonna be doing on our side, we wanna make sure that it doesn't conflict with what they're doing on their side. But that is an element that we just need to be aware of. But, you know, on the site, we have that pool, we have the gym, we have the middle school. I think most counselors have toured the facility. If you haven't, give me a call, I got a key, I can take you through it. It's not in great shape, to be honest. And so we're having the architects give us some, you know, rough numbers of what it would take. I said with, with the gym, you know, the, the middle school portion's not in great shape. Schools are kind of cool in terms of if you have the money and you have the good bones and infrastructure to, to do remodel. Redmond did that with their city hall, which we'll see next month. But I think the, as the architects pointed out last year through their process, the annex building has the better potential. It's solidly built, withstand, I think, earthquakes, it's all concrete. In fact, they proposed putting parking on top of the building. And so it has really good bones. It also overlooks your park, if you ever consider to do park improvements and things like that. So, you know, if you were to reuse some of the buildings on the campus, I would think the annex would probably be your better bet. I would need, you know, an elevator and some other things, or you can make that building into Sandy style and have, you know, patio decks overlooking the park and river. But the middle school and the gym, I think the long-term plan for that would be to eliminate it, to free up that portion of the property for either a new pool, community center, or the idea of a, a, a new development. So there's, there's two different ways to look at it. Potential redevelopment of all that site up against Pleasant Street. And that's assuming that the pool is gonna get moved, or, you know, that we seek an RFP with a developer to include a pool. I don't think you'll get any interest in a developer wanting to get into that business, and it still doesn't answer the question of, you know, who pays for the operating cost on that? Obviously, the city would probably contribute quite a portion. We can look for, you know, public-private partners with YMCA and other ideas that, I guess it's. So the, so the current plan has the development occurring up on Pleasant Street, which is a, a prime, you know, spot, given that we have a plan for Pleasant Street to turn into more of a mixed-use retail, walkable. And this can be one of those, you know, projects that really light a fire for helping Pleasant Street develop. You know, if we, we put out an RFP for a, a private developer to look at partnering with the city, we would wanna put conditions on what we would like, what kind of development? Is it mixed-use, is it housing, is it retail? What is the mix of that portion? That process, I would encourage we engage with the public to help us with that vision of what we would want. And then it, it would have to integrate well with the other things that would go on with the campus. So if the pool does stay there, how does a new development, you know, complement each other with a, a pool or recreation center? And then also, how does it help enhance what's gonna happen behind there? We don't want a development just to block off the rest of the park and the access to the river. We want it to work well with that, so that it's drawing people in and through, and it's not just a, you know, a blockade between Pleasant Street and everything that's gonna go on behind there. So those are things to consider. I know there was interest in looking at a development partnership. The timing is an interesting one on that one, too, because the big question is, first, what do you do with that pool? And that's why I think I put in the report, if you were, you know, excited about moving forward as soon as possible with the development there and seeing what developers might just put on the table, you could put, you know, you could put in there to have them propose, you know, what would you do if the pool stays? And what would you do if, you know, it's voted down and we're gonna have to look at another location for the pool or something? The challenges for that site will be parking. You know, I, I don't think, is there any structured parking in Sandy right now? That would be one thing that the city can contribute funds towards with their urban renewal. I think that's a prime, probably, development spot to have structured parking underneath, given Pleasant St, Street is above the pool level. But, you know, again, those are the financials I would have to review with the proposals, and also how much would the Urban Renewal Board be willing to contribute towards something like that? Any questions about?
So I'm looking at a different line, the ones you've drawn already.
Yeah.
Do you think there's interest in the school district, given that they're wanting to go out for a bond with the grade school for them to purchase the pool back? Can we draw a different line for the property?
I think that's kind of what I was alluding to. I, I, I've had very preliminary conversations about that. They're going through their own process, and hopefully, you know, they'll kind of come to the same kind of questions about the city. Oh, they own City Ridge, but they wanna partner. You know, that's why I think we just stay engaged with that and let them know that we're interested. I, I'm kind of curious about it, you know, if they are going out for a bond, is that an opportunity to have some kind of joint effort with the school, where we both go out to achieve, you know, something that can be a benefit for the community as a whole?
A longer conversation, a broader conversation, potentially even if people drew the line the other way. Counselors take the whole thing.
Yeah.
We'd own two schools.
Or school district.
Find, find some options for the school staff to get a brand-new facility on an alternative location.
On top of the waste water treatment.
I can't see us affording that, my goodness, we can't afford what we got now, and I mean, I'm going on the same degree.
You just gotta.
That circle's gonna be an awfully expensive.
So I agree, I, I, but remember, what we're looking at here is not us doing it. You know, previously, what we looked at was we were buying a piece of property, and then we were gonna ask taxpayers to develop it. What we're talking about here is, is control. We're talking about our community controlling the future of our community. And look, you know, and we keep talking about how great it is that we own forty acres of property adjacent to our downtown for the future of our community. Like, to me, this just makes it, the opportunities more. Just, but this is, we're nowhere near that conversation. You know, I, I will tell you, some kind of a develop, a public-private partnership that starts meeting a lot of our answers. I think we could develop this and get this thing moving a lot quicker than this kind of a, this kind of a method than taking the next three, four years and, or longer, trying to do it ourselves. Part of my worry when we look at this property is the economy. And if the econ, if we do go through an economic downturn, I think this property sits vacant for the next decade, but, and I just worry that if we sit on our hands with this property for the next two, three, four years, trying to figure out what we're gonna do, we could be two decades away from Pleasant Street happening.
I guess what I'm seeing is, is that there's some high risk of, we're coming down the road. Certainly see something that might be done if we throw the ten million dollars at it. Certainly see something that might be done if we throw the ten million dollars at it and come up with a beautiful pool, at least we've got that part of the thing happening. But if we were to go after it with a third party of some kind, who's gonna take that on and want the control? But is it gonna cost us money? You put all these other variables in there and pretty soon you make them scarier.
Is the pool there? I think that's the real question, is, does the pool, do, is the pool go here in this location?
If, if I had a clean piece of swipe here, I would put it there, but I got it there now. So it just, it just seems to me like we got a lot of big questions we're talking about. I'm not sure that we're gonna be able to answer those big questions.
So, you know, I was, uh, thinking that was one of the, figuring out whether or not to, uh, purchase the pool a long time ago and for, looking at, looking at other pieces of property in town to be able to say, is this piece of property or that property, this property over here, uh, ones that, you know, we should just build a pool on and just not do anything with that. So there was a decision to make it so that, uh, because the property is so valuable for our community. It's been a, a great, uh, park aspect of it, even though it wasn't part of the city at the time, uh, until recently. Uh, one other factor that why picking that spot for the pool was that we can use urban renewal dollars to build a new pool. An idea behind it was we were gonna tear it down, build it, we could use that. But we were looking at other places in, in the, in the urban renewal district, because we found other places in the city that would be, hey, that'd be great. Just building a pool over there, you know, right across from the high school, you know, the high school has a couple pieces of land over there. But that was outside the urban renewal district and so we couldn't spend that money, which we didn't come up with that, for that. But, uh, yeah, is there, you know, can you build a pool cheaper on that piece of land?
Right.
So.
The end opened up opportunities for that property.
And the twelve hundred fifty of our residents want a pool, like is that where they want to prioritize their tax numbers?
Right. Or could portions of the development of this property pay for a pool? Think about it, this is a rev, guys, this is a revenue stream. This is a revenue stream, if you look at it like a business. And I mean, there's potential here as we take this and develop it and go into private agreements that we could dedicate revenue to, to a pool, you know, community center facility. That was a portion of some of the conversations I had earlier today was, you know, that, you know, some communities, there's examples of community using projects like this, like Kaiser Station for example and others, where some of that money can be generated to go towards public projects. So I just, so what I'm asking is, is not to go down a path, but just to open your mind, right, to what we could potentially do with this property that both serves the community and the needs of our community as well provides some, you know, some funding sources and some other things we can do.
Yeah, I think that, um, with the development, I, one thing I would, and I don't know until we go down a path of that, but, um, given, I think, um, given the market right now with land and Sandy.
And it needs.
Yeah, I mean, the, the city would have to probably contribute, um, and give up something, right? I mean, is it, you know, basically, here's the land, develop, you know, with these conditions? Uh, what are we gonna contribute in terms of, you know, parking or other, you know, in or, in order to help dictate that, um, and encourage a developer to actually invest in a, in a project that we want to see there? We'd have to probably, you know, spend urban renewal dollars on that, either through land swap or actually, here's three million dollars, please develop this. Not to say, that's not how I'm negotiating, but that, you know, just saying that, kind of trying to be realistic.
Exactly, but one of the ideas, we had come back from a Redmond on, and I know we don't live in Redmond, but we came back from Redmond going, hey, we can do that, that was right before purchasing this, was the fact that we could actually build something, and they did this in Milwaukee. They did a piece of land right in their downtown, near city hall there, and they built that and then turned around sold it. Because they wanted to basically have, uh, uh, input on what was gonna be built there and how was it gonna work and then turn around and then sold it and had, uh, mixed-use, um, uh, residential and commercial on it as well, so. And that's where the potential development, that is where we thought, um, at the time is we could have a building that had split with government offices, leasing, and power, and what we saw over in Redmond's home.
What comes on Sid, Sid and Finn's? Where it built that, so then, yeah, the bid went through, you took, I think, a urban renewal that actually used, uh, built a building and built it all out from the beginning. McMoons comes in and that's their magic, they're gonna fit machines and then maybe it's all on them.
Yep. So, uh, Kathleen Walker pointed out, and an important piece of this too, is that we have other plans going on, uh, in the city that will be very helpful as we proceed, uh, with the campus. And that's, the, the first one tonight, we did the, the Parks and Trails Master Plan Contract Award. And, you know, as Kathleen, uh, mentioned, in that scope is to, uh, consider, you know, what, what are the amenities, uh, that, um, could fit at the community campus? And, and, um, how does that, you know, help, um, achieve our goals for the Parks and Trails system around the city? Um, you know, we have such an awesome property there, we have a master plan already for the Sandy River Trail. How does the campus then connect with that? We've talked about this numerous times, mountain biking trails, access to the river, building out that park with new parking and other amenities. So we're gonna be engaging with the public, um, in a pretty robust way with the Parks and Trails Master Plan. And that's a perfect opportunity to ask those questions. And, and really, those are gonna be focused a lot on the park, but I'm sure, you know, more recreational sort of facilities and things will be a part of that as well, so.
Sports fields.
Yeah, sports fields, so, you know, in the end, that, I think, is part of the original vision of buying that campus was, this is a, you know, not just those partnership and potential development or whatever, but absolutely a recreational facility that was multi-generational, um, with parks and also, you know, more active sports and ball fields and trails and things like that.
Are we, what's, what are we allowed to do with the property? Anything we want, or I mean, are, are we able to split off the park stuff from like the upper buildings that we were just looking at? I mean, how flexible are we able to get with the property?
I think so, yeah, yeah.
There's different zoning, but it's all within city limits.
Right.
I don't think so.
So, I mean, I guess potentially we could look at a development agreement, which we could take the terms of the agreement of everything that we would want to see that look like, right? And then we could keep that separate from, you know, the Parks and Trails Master Plan and everything we want to do with that. And in fact, I would say that even developing the parks and implementing some of those master plans would make the upper lots even more appealing for development agreements.
Especially depending on whoever you're developing.
Well, especially what we want to accomplish out of that property, right? Was there some?
What is the timeline for the development of the parks plan?
It's, uh, basically this time next year we'll have a plan, um, so I'm not sure, I can look at the timeline to see. It's, it's like the end of August, right, isn't it? Yeah.
And we'll have a lot of public input meetings and polling and all that stuff well before that. That's the plan, you know, take a plan at the end of August, so, you know, there's, the public meetings are gonna be starting here pretty soon, so.
Design shirets.
Yeah, exactly. So you can get a lot of the input you're looking for in those meetings.
So it looks like we've got a number of things compressing down that timeline, that we're not gonna have all the feedback that we need.
That's one of my concerns is, yeah, um, if, you know, as we're trying to get this petition and all that on the ballot, we're getting public input still on what that could be and, you know, are those gonna be in harmony?
Like November twenty twenty-one, look a little bit, I think we'd have a lot more input by that point in time. A lot of the master planning that needed to happen, the assessments that needed to happen. We'd have a clearer picture too, if we want to subdivide.
But if, if we start going down that path, then, then I'd like us to look at what we're doing with the current pool, because if it's gonna sit vacant and we're paying a hundred thousand dollars to just keep water in it, then, that's, that's a long time to, to do that, so. I, I feel like if we're gonna put it off to that, and I'm not saying that we shouldn't, but if we're gonna do that, then, then we need to make some really tough decisions about what we're gonna do with that structure.
At the very least, if we start with the polling, um, my, again, just full disclosure, my biggest concern is if the polling does take, you know, a month or two, that it already, you know, gets us behind to do the, you know, financials and getting committees involved and petitions and all that. But I think that information will still be useful regardless, because that might answer all these questions. The public might say, no, we're not interested, and we're like, okay, you know, let's go to Plan B. Let's, what does Plan B look like for developing that property? Or the public's like, yes, absolutely, we're like, oh, the iron's hot, let's try to strike this thing, um, so.
Do you even have enough information to go into a poll though? Like, do you, do you know it, like, to Lori's point on the questions, do you even know what this would cost, right? I mean, how much more information do we need to collect to even be able to do the poll?
Right, and that, that goes back to, I mean, do you really, I mean, survey design is, you know, there's, there's a science and there's an art part of it, um, what kind of questions are you asking? And back to the what question, are you asking, you know, would you support, um, increasing your taxes to open the pool? Or would you support increasing your taxes for more recreation programming and reopening the pool and operating the pool? Would you support, you know, a bond of thirty million dollars to build, uh, you know, a better pool with, uh, an outdoor pool and things like that? We would come back to, we would draft some questions, come back to you, get the survey firm to do that with us, get a council committee to help.
Hopefully they have a decent idea of what type of questions to ask.
Yeah, yeah.
Exactly my point, survey department, that's where I go to, where you've done this many times, you're professional, that's why we're asking you to help. Give us, uh, questions out there, we may be able to massage a few of those questions, but the big ideas are those that we don't, can't think of, which they would bring to the table.
They're likely gonna all of a sudden know what data we need to have or what numbers we need to have.
What info would ask for that?
Here it comes, yeah.
Yeah.
I guess I'm really in favor of getting the poll out, even though we're gonna have. I gotta say, um, I'm really nervous, this, there's a lot of stuff here that could just hit us in the face. But I, I really think you're right on terms of the poll, that's finding out what the city wants, let's get it correct. Let's look at the different sizes, look at the different options. And I'm sure that a hosting company, I'll look them up for the right kind of questions, they're answering in a way, that they would be responsive statistically correct and all the things to make sure we got it right. Because I think, whatever we do, we want to be reasonably, not perfectly, but reasonably sure we're gonna succeed. Or otherwise, why not?
So why not?
Yeah, we'll start with that, um, I have so many questions. Is there anything the council wants to take off the table now? Like, are you interested in, in a Parks and Recreation District or is that, um, too big, too much? Or you want to keep it more focused towards, you know, aquatics and recrea- recreation? There's also, and there's, there's also the element of, how much information does someone who answers the phone or, you know, to respond, do they, do they understand these issues? You know, what, what do you mean, why, you know, the, tell me more, what is a Parks and Recreation District and why should I support that over? So, I mean, that's part of what the survey firm can help us, but you also don't want to have a half-hour-long survey. So, you know, part of the art of that is how, uh, getting, educating the, the, um, polling, you know, participant in a way that, um, isn't leading or anything, but get some good information, be able to give you a good answer, so they know what they're responding to.
Counselor Schultz has our hand down for a while, so I'll give this counselor Schultz first.
I guess my initial thoughts on the aquatic versus Parks and Rec, if I don't, I don't think we're gonna pass an aquatic only. If, well, if like seven percent of our people are using our pool, I don't see how that number would work out very well. But I also think that that's absolutely something that would be in the polling for like, I think that'd be like the first thing they probably ask. If it's just a pool, will you vote yes, or if it's more cooler stuff and a pool, will you vote? That's my interpretation.
We, and we, I mean, we've got thirty acres of property we need to, to do something with, I think.
Right, my vision all along has been doing the whole thing.
Yeah, that's right. Couple details.
I think, uh, I would lean towards, uh, uh, Parks and Rec, the pool, Parks and Rec. I, I know there is, in the, the first layout, you mentioned a few other things, which I appreciate, but the senior center and services, I don't think that should be a part of what we're going after. And even, um, the, uh, and I don't really know about the, uh, the other services with recreation programs. That's Parks and Rec, but expanding recreational services is part of, it was one of the bullet points in there. I think the more complex you make something, becomes easier to say no. And so when you can keep it pretty darn simple, pool, and I agree with you, I don't know if a pool on its own would stand on its own in being able to, uh, pass. I think the two of them complement each other and, and work together. I think those other types of things with, uh, everybody's water and, I mean, people get confused, there was just too much information.
So we're just, go ahead.
Go ahead, you're gonna come ahead of that.
No, well, I, so there's no way we can create a taxing district that then does an intergovernmental agreement that's us having to handle the whole piece of the gas.
Um, you, as part, again, as part of like sort of the conditions, you know, in the, the ballot language and everything, I think you could, um, to a certain extent, right? That the, the district would contract with the city for, you know, services or whatever, for staffing, what, you know? Could, I think you could do that, um, you know, there's pros and cons to that, but.
But we would then still have control as a.
Not as a, not as a governing body, um.
Because they could contract out with anybody.
Yeah.
Okay, yep, cool.
So I think we have a very smart person among us, yeah, Lane Walker. I know you didn't get a chance to read her email, but, um, she calls something out on her email, talks about the, the what we want to do, whether we're renovating the pool, old pool, new pool, renovate the gym, sell off the property. And she writes, so Parks District and Park on us, how you pay for the what? And we're just trying to figure out the what. So she references Parks Master Plan, Facilities Master Plans, and I'd add the polling on there as well too. Because honestly, right now, I don't think any of us, we probably have seven different versions of the what. And then after you hear someone else say something cool, your what just changed, that's not a plan. That's just spitballing. And so we need to get far away from spitballing, get to a plan, and I think the polling is one aspect of that. I think we're gonna have incomplete information, but I think the polling will actually feed some of the other planning as well too. Because those other plans, if we do those in conjunction, we can actually get some pretty good information from the polling. And then that's where we're figuring out the what our community wants, not just the seven of us. So I'm all on for polling.
Listen, you mentioned my name, I will say that usual practices, and Don could, you know, Don's more experienced at this than me, but usually you do this Parks and Trails Master Plan to get the public excited about what's going on. And then you do a poll, okay, we, you know, they've seen the shirets, they're all excited about sports fields, oh, I want sports fields, I want trails, I want a pool. And then you get them all excited and then you do a poll, not the other way around. So that's the only concern we have, I think, but.
Yeah, I agree, I agree, and I, I agree and I disagree with that. Part of it is on a realistic poll, that's not.
Please don't.
Please don't, yeah. I'll throw eight minutes.
Um, Don Robertson is the only person in this room that's been through everything. I'd like to hear his comments at some point if it's.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So instead of just putting them around the spot, I'm gonna let you formulate what you might want to say. I'll go to Counselor Exer and then I'll go over here.
I'm gonna have like two and a half cents to the council's conversation time. What the polling should look like, and I guess I'll say it that way, because I'm really looking forward to what Don would say. Um, I think it should become the, instead of just the pool, I think we need to start out with a pool and something else. Buildings, the landscaping, the trails, I think we should start out, because I agree that the pool itself won't hold itself financially, nor will it hold itself, I think, when it comes to the citizens of this, of the city. I think that there, in my conversations, I get as much pushback to, should we have a pool? Because we have to have a pool. So I'm concerned that if it's just a pool, I think we will be, we won't give you the full picture. So let's find something that starts with the pool and, and then maybe go from there and building up. And I can think about five different scenarios, I think that's what I'm saying.
I think it's, it's important to start, stay simple, but try to get a little bit more than just one thing, like the pool.
All right.
No pressure. So for, for most of you who don't know, um, just a hint in my background, I was with the city of Milwaukee from eighty-two to nine. During that time, uh, we worked with the Blackmanus County Department of the Blackmanus Park District. It took us about three years to give or take the health that plan, but put it together. It took us about three years to give or take the health that plan, put it together, and run all the numbers, do all the surveys, and go through the whole process of getting into the ballot, and being successful, and then moving forward, forming the Park District. It is, where you're at now is, you're kind of racing your cart against your horse. That November deadline. And I think that you, you gotta really take a serious look at how important is that November deadline to you. Last time I checked, there's gonna be another November poll, another one, so. So really take a look at whether or not that's the magic gate as far as getting it done. And I realize, I'm a newcomer to the community, and I realize that there is a certain amount of pressure to do something with the pool down there. And I'm sure that there is equal amount of pressure to make it go away and develop it versus reestablish that pool and get it back open versus build a whole new pool. So I know that you're kind of getting it from all sides on this one, but it's better to make one right decision as opposed to two or three bad decisions. I've heard a lot of discussion about pulling in different things tonight. I cannot stress enough how important that is. Move forward with professionally done scientific polls. Because it really is, you know, kind of taking a look, this early one, it's kind of taking a look at, you know, the broader picture of everything. I think that the way you've been talking about around this poll is the right idea. But I also think, I've made the Councilor Schultz's point, you gotta kind of work out a little bit, determine where those best sweet spots are as far as potential support for those areas. When we took a look at North Clackamas Park and Wright District, we surveyed right, you know, early on Milwaukee. We surveyed unincorporated Clackamas County, we surveyed Happy Valley, we surveyed Oregon City, we looked at West, we surveyed Westland. Surveyed Wego, we did the full end of the county out there. And eventually we started pulling it back into the area that originally you came, which was unincorporated and Milwaukee. We also spent a lot of time taking a look at service district versus special district. And at the time, the boundary commission said we more approve a service, a special district. We more approve another layer of government. So that left one option, which was a service district. That's why North Clackamas is not a special district, a service district. Because the legal board is the Board of County Commissioners, not the District Advisory Board that's out there. So some of these decisions are going to be outside of your scope of capability to make those decisions. Someday you have to be partnering, you know, with the boundary commission of Metro. You can be talking to the county, you don't have a whole lot of incorporated cities immediately around you. You know, some people think their answer is, you know, those are the kinds of stakeholders you really want to spend the time with too. And the school district. You know, I think that the city manager levels and the school superintendent levels, one of those heartfelt conversations of what do you really need in a school district for that kind of property to make that school a success? And what do we really need to make that a success? Where are those overlaps that we can, we can kind of deal with? But I, I think your single most significant hurdle is, your timeline is, in my opinion, poorly addressed. To be able to make good, informed, wisely sound, capable decisions. That's why.
Well, just so you know, Councilor Exner wanted to be on the twenty nineteen ballot.
That's right.
He's really.
I changed my mind. Put that on the table. I have the right to change my mind all the time.
Appreciate it.
All their private partnerships, yep, there's opportunity there. It's not the silver bullet that everybody always thinks of. But it's not something that you discount either. There's other models out there, particularly at the, you talked about doing a recreation district. I would strongly suggest that when you're doing your early survey, and you take a look at, at starting with that, but also testing the waters out, and include the senior center in those discussions. Most senior centers are run by partners, it's a party partnership. They're seldom run independently of that. And so I would read, or at least in Oregon, and so I really take a look at those services that you might want to consider pairing with them. We heard the city manager talk about paybacks. Wow, we'll front all this money, and then we'll try and get an agreement, pay us back. One way of getting that paid back, the way Milwaukee got that paid back was that the Park District took over the operation of Milwaukee Center, which is their senior center. Park District took over the operation of all the existing parks within Milwaukee. Park District in the city, we're an intergovernmental agreement. I wrote, specified how those facilities would be maintained, how those facilities would be developed, how much money would be set aside to make sure all those things are taken care of. And all that was lived up to and moved forward within that, and we'd have a very successful partnership within there. But after the Happy Valley, the Mike came in, unfortunate, and I really don't know the history of that, of that national at that point. But not overly familiar with that, so I could find out more. There was one other point too that I wanted to. Kind of touch on. I'll fill it up. And I'd love to be able to answer any questions here.
Thank you. Appreciate your input. Thank you.
And welcome to knowledge.
Yes. Thank you.
All right. We have step one. So I think the next step is we'll start the process of the polling and engage with the firm. We have some expertise that could probably point us to, some good firms out there that could do this work. Counselors will be involved in those questions and let's go. Either by committee, or we can do it, you know, at a workshop or something too.
So simultaneously, do you need to be doing your homework though, as far as like the boundaries of a district, the tax? You know what I mean? Like, is there some work that we can kind of give you direction and maybe spend, and maybe we need to talk about a little bit as a council, that should we give direction, spend a little bit of money to start? Because I just don't want to get the pullback, it's positive, we're ready to go, but now we haven't done any of this legwork, right, to get there? So I'm trying, is there stuff that we can be doing simultaneously so that we're not just caught? Yeah?
I would strongly suggest that you spend some time talking to your potential partners or potential, depending on where compression is. I wouldn't say adversaries, but people who have, you know, a stake in this. I think if you, you know, if you're dealing with compression throughout the entire area, then you better figure out who's going to be the losers and who's going to be the winner. I can guarantee you, if the county, if you're going to move into compression, it's done across the entire board. It's not just a city, or it's not just, you know, the district that's going to feel that compression. It's going to be every other local government within that jurisdiction is going to get compression. It's going to get whacked out of their budget. So I would strongly suggest that you start taking a look at the staff level of, you know, having some preliminary conversations with the Clackamas County, having preliminary conversations with Metro, having, you know, the preliminary conversations with the school district, all those different compression animals out. You know, identify those groups and start having those conversations with those current public table and talk to them.
Okay. Councilor Lee.
What do you see, Don, as the downsides of a service district? Versus?
Yeah, you know, when, when, that was the big scary when we were doing ours. And the big scary is you're giving up potentially control. We made the decision to do a full-blown Park and Wright District, which by the way, the mileage rate is fifty-four cents per thousand. We developed, I don't really recall, I mean, that's a long time ago, but, you know, at the time, we developed the North Clackamas Potty Park, we did some regional parks, we did neighborhood parks, we did all these things. We didn't go out for a pay bond for that. We did a revenue bond for that, which does not require a vote. We went out for a permanent rate. We used that permanent rate to leverage and answer a revenue bond, guaranteeing a revenue bond to pay a grant that way. And that's how we got the funds to do all the park development, pool development, everything else involved with it. So those were side issues, and I just totally lost you on a good question. Oh, the downside to a service district?
Yeah.
The downside to a service district is you need to have a very strong intergovernmental agreement over. The borough board is going to be the overall legal board. I would probably speculate them to get a lawyer or some, want to check what your, your counsel. As to whether you can be the board, or whether the county would have to be the board. But I know that's the county that has to be.
I'm walking away from that.
Yeah.
I believe what the lawyer said was the county has to be, the cities cannot.
And, I mean, that's part of the issue in Happy Valley right now, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I will say that, that at the time that we did it, the county commissioners were fantastic workers. It's a different cast of characters. And I'm not immature exactly where we are at this point in time. You know, we had Charlie, who we read Judy Hammerstein, and we had a third person, the woman three at the time, who was not overly engaged with the whole process, but Darlene and Judy were the ones that were really the strong advocates for the district. So I, again, that's something we need to take a look at and talk to those folks. I would assume you need to, we want to talk to the boundary commission right out of the gate also. Find out if there are restrictions. That came as a shock to us. And again, when they did it, they said, you have to have at least one city out of the three, which had to be Gladstone, Happy Valley, and Milwaukee. Milwaukee was the only one that was willing to do it. At that point, Gladstone said, no, we'll just continue being Gladstone. And Happy Valley said, no, we'll continue being Happy Valley.
Okay, we got a plan?
Yeah.
All right.
All right.
Bell Street, three sixty second.
Mike, thank you for waiting.
Where are we?
Where did we end up?
We're down a pole.
Are we gonna?
Yeah.
You get some money or?
You got an answer in front of you?
Nope.
Jordan, do you need money?
At the end of the last conversation, I felt like it was still not, we had a lot of talk and we just didn't make any decision.
Uh, when we, we'll bring it back to you.
You get a proposal for, we go out for an RFP for a polling company?
Yeah.
And know how much we're going to pay.
Todd and I will work on a plan, when we bring that contract to you and say, here's our plan for where we, where this money's coming from to do it.
Well, there's going to be more work done as far as due diligence, compression issues, all of that simultaneously while that's.
Yeah, I mean, some of this, like, work we could do right, we could start it right now without engaging a consultant. I have one proposal from a consultant on some of the economics, but I think some of that stuff we could start in-house and maybe work with the county on getting information, but some of this other stuff we can, we can get rolling on too. You know, well, in another month, when we bring this back, whatever, we'll have that reality check moment too about timeline. I think those points are pretty well taken on achievable, but.
Because I'd like to know about the compression thing right away, and the reason why is because there was a, about a year and a half ago, there was conversation about not being able to do some of this because of the compression rate was at a certain point already in our community. So I just would hate to get going down too far without finding that out, and it just stops everything. So that was about a year and a half, two years ago, that.
I thought you have looked at compression some though.
We are in compression. I don't think there's any local options which get compressed first, which is good. But it's not, it's, I think it's like five thousand dollars for the city or something a year. I mean, obviously this would add to it, so, I mean, it, it's a factor. So I don't know about the, that legal question though. It's a good question. So it's one of the first ones we'll start, obviously.
Thank you. Mr. Walker?
Uh, this is a kind of a proposed schedule timeline for the Bell Street, three sixty second Avenue extension project. And, you know, I think everybody knows where this would go, but apparent, this would be a extension of Bell Street West roughly to, if you drew an imaginary line north on three sixty second. At some point there, those two streets would intersect, and that's what this would be. It's about seven thousand feet, linear feet of street, and I think the most of it would be on the Bell Street side. So anyway, with the, the recent passage of the vehicle registration fee in the county and the passage of HB two zero one seven, we would expect to receive about four hundred thousand dollars in annual revenue to the street fund as a result of these two things. The HB two zero one seven money would ramp up, it would fully, be fully in place by twenty twenty-three. It's two cents a gallon over six years, I think, every two years. So anyway, this would provide enough revenue to support debt service, about five and a half million dollars. And then with the money we have in the street fund, with about eight million dollars available for this project, and that unusual for most city projects, that exceeds the estimated cost of the project at this time. At this time, exactly. So anyway, we have a kind of a proposed, we have three million in the existing budget, which is probably a lot more than we need for, but anything that rolls over, you know, in the current budget would be used for construction in the following biennium. So this is kind of a timeline. We'd start in January, next year, right after the first of the year. Solicitation, statements from consultants, negotiate the scope of work and fee. And the survey design and environmental would start in March. Take us about five months to define kind of the right of way and the land that would be necessary to, you know, once the alignment was kind of roughed out enough to know how much land you need. And we'd do the appraisals and submit offers to property owners. Also, there's some wetlands and some intermittent street crossings that would be involved. And so the, sometimes the environmental permitting can take a little while, so we've built some time into the schedule for that. And then ideally, we'd want to have, you know, kind of a, or complete estimate, a better idea of the right of way and the environmental costs by about the end of twenty twenty. And then when we started the budget process for the following biennium, we could kind of set up how we wanted to finance this, what combination of cash and debt service we'd use for it. And then in March of twenty twenty-one, we'd advertise for bids. And like I said, since we have more money in the current biennium than we need probably for the preliminary engineering and environmental and right of way work, we could actually, you know, if we advertised in twenty twenty, in March, you probably wouldn't sign a contract with somebody until June or July anyway. You'd be in the next biennium, so there's not a real cash flow issue there. The only kind of wild card in there, I just found this out today, talking with Kelly. We would probably have to go through the city's land use process. When we did the current transportation system plan, one of the recommendations in there was to change the city's development code language to make roads that were in the TSP permitted uses in all zoning districts. And we have the language all ready to go, we just never adopted it when we did the TSP. So we can either go through our own land use process, or we can adopt some code language between now and, you know, the beginning of the year and that would kind of fulfill the intent of the original code changes that were recommended in the TSP. So, but, you know, I have to talk with Kelly about that, we kind of have to figure out what it would take to do, you know, it might not be that bad to go through the land use process. It might be less cumbersome than trying to adjust the code between now and end of the year. And so, you know, the reason that we've kind of settled on starting this in January, right after the first of the year, part of it is just staff capacity, we've got a lot of stuff going on. And we'd like to get some of these other projects kind of out the door and underway on their own before we took on another one. And then, you know, the legislature just passed a change to the qualification-based selection process for architectural and engineering services. Prior to this, we could not, right now you cannot, you have to select a consultant, negotiate price and scope, if you don't want to pry. If you don't want the price for the next consultant, it really takes a long time. This, they, you still have to, you know, make your selection based on qualifications, but you can at least ask for proposals from your top three. Price proposals from your top three ranked, uh, respondents. And so we, you know, um, I really hate to be the guinea pig on something like this, but I, I think it would be a better, we'd get a better product, I think. If we did it under the new, uh, legislation that takes effect on January first.
Why heckle you on your timeline, but compared to ODOT, I mean, you're like, you're fast, man.
Well, that's the nice thing about a locally funded project. There's no FHWA requirements, there's no, you know, the only environmental stuff is our own, we're not using any federal dollars. Uh, the VRF doesn't have, it's a local, it's a local source of funding. And, uh, and once the gas tax money comes to us, it's, you know, we decide, as long as it's used for a road or street purpose, we decide what happens with it. So if, there are a lot fewer, uh, procedural hurdles with a locally funded project.
Counselor Exer.
Yeah, I, I guess to go on the mayor's, uh, comment is, I didn't see ODOT in here. And I'm assuming they're gonna be all over us with this intersection, at three sixty second, a hundred twenty-six, right?
Yeah, they would have some limited input into how we make the connection to their highway and how we alter the signal to accommodate that. But that's, that's pretty simple.
Talking ODOT here. And I, my history on them hasn't been all the best in the world. But it seems like there's more than just a little bit. They're gonna have to add a second road in there and there probably gonna be some analysis on how many turns, right turns, that kind of stuff.
Yeah, the single design, you know, ODOT will approve the single design. And the, uh, connection to their roadway, and there may be like a deceleration lane and an acceleration lane on the highway, but that's built into the estimate.
Okay, and then the other question I had was, uh, we do our own land use, uh, will we have to get Luba involved?
Well, hopefully we wouldn't be subject to a, uh, a, uh, appeal, but you know, that can happen.
I know some of those landowners out there weren't terribly excited about, um, placing them inside the city, so.
No, that's the other advantage, this entire project is inside the city.
All of Bell Street or just half of Bell Street?
Oh, yeah.
Castle property and Millers. Both, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Could we, or would we have the ability after going into financing, so I'm going down the timeline a little bit here, but after we engage in financing, would we be able to go out and get grants from like tourism, Oregon? If we build something around there? I mean, we can still, we could pay that in any way we want, right?
Right. This just shows it's feasible with funds we have, you know, in the pipeline are on hand. If there's other opportunities for funding, um.
SDC development.
Yeah, we'd take advantage of that.
So this is roadways, is this also including all the utilities, sewer, water?
That, that's a good point, we really don't have money in the, uh, utility funds to put pipes in these roads at this point. We, you know, we've got some time to work on that, but right now, uh, both, you know, the sewer, the water fund, do we have? Water fund are probably in a little better shape, but we really don't have a lot of money just to put a dry pipeline for future development. And I, and you wouldn't need it necessarily the entire length of it, you know, depends on topography. It may not be a sewer line down the street, some of the sewers might go, um, more south instead of east west, depending on the topography. So, you know, once we have the, kind of the preliminary roadway design, we'll know that and then we'll know where we need, uh, utilities.
Seems to me we'd want to have some of that road in utility, at least the pipes. Or places where we know we're gonna have some commercial development.
It's easy to do.
Around the corner, yeah, that kind of thing might not be near as important, but.
Yeah.
First piece off of five hundred twenty-six.
Yeah, it's easy to do with water, um, because, you know, it's not as dependent on topography as a sewer line is. You know, that's, that's what the preliminary design is for.
So. So at the end of this, on advertising for bids, is that advertising for bids to go out and build, construction wise, or just to get?
Yeah, that's a good time to go out, usually like to go out, you know, right at the beginning of spring.
Oh, I wasn't, I wasn't debating, uh, spring, winter, or whatever, just the fact that, uh, that would be, that's what that bid would be for, not for any other design type thing. So at the end of that, we would select someone and they would go build the roads in X amount of.
No, first we would do a shovel.
Okay, we've, we've got several shovels.
You can have the shovel, I want the backhoe, golden backhoe.
Do a ribbon cutting the highway. Stand hold that.
Before you do that, you gotta bar the move.
Yeah, yeah, right. And so, now I remember at our, at Gold State Retreat, there was some comment made that we've already engaged in some kind of right of way acquisition or some kind of agreements. Have we not made, are we anywhere in that process?
And, uh, at one time we did have some, we had one willing seller, but we needed two, not, not one willing seller, one willing grantor, somebody was willing to give us a right of way. Uh, but we, you know, we weren't able to pull that off because the other potential, uh, right of way provider couldn't, uh.
Come to an agreement.
There's, I think one, one thing you made, cause we did go out there and put stakes out there at one point. David had worked with some of them just to kind of get an alignment.
Put some pin down or something, yeah.
Part, uh, through the north of, um, twenty-six on three sixty second.
Yeah, we have a preliminary design for the.
That's what.
Uh, north, south section of three sixty second for about fifteen hundred feet north of the highway, but that's about it. We have a very detailed design for that.
So that might be part of it.
Okay. Well, thank you, I appreciate, I really appreciate this timeline, this is a really.
It's exciting.
Nice update, it's good, yeah, very exciting.
I got plenty of.
Stick around, Mike.
Wow.
Yeah. Do you want to do some more? My favorite topic. Did you bring some samples in for us tonight too?
Um, and so this is the other big project we've got going on, the, uh, the facilities plan. And so, uh, you know, once we lined this all up, we realized we've really done quite a bit since we had the original presentation in February, about six, six months ago. You know, we've, um, submitted our WIFIA, uh, letter of interest for the WIFIA loan. Uh, we've, um, uh, been placed on the, um, shortlist for funding. In fact, we'll know on the twelfth, after the public comment period is over, for the, uh, SRF loan to do the improvements at the existing plant and the, uh, INI work in the collection system. Uh, we've gotten the FCS group on board to do the utility rate model and new system development charges for wastewater. And they're, they're, they're done essentially, they're just a little tweaking that we need to do. Council will see those, uh, in this timeline as well. And then we, uh, as council knows, we, we, we took some tours of some other facilities, uh, in, uh, Yan Hill County and Washington County, Clackamas County. We've started the, um, temperature and flow monitoring on the Sandy River. And then, uh, we have a public engagement firm on, under contract to help with the public involvement, uh, portion of the project. And then we, uh, received the, uh, budget note at the end of the recent legislative session to investigate some green infrastructure alternatives. And, uh, other, uh, land application op- options and the costs for those, as well as looking at the cost of, uh, options like conveying the sewage to Gresham and paying them to treat it. And doing the same thing and send it to Clackamas County. So, you know, we, those were kind of dismissed early on because of the, the presumed, um, expense, but we're gonna actually look into more detail and get a, a more firm number and have, actually have discussions with those other agencies. So we know what our kind of buy-in charge would be. And so the next thing to do is to, uh, uh, finalize the alternative in the plan, adopt it and submit it to DEQ. And, um, you know, we hear back from the public, the worship councils and members of the public during this process. Uh, and so one thing that we're certain, uh, we're, we're certain of is that the, uh, Clackamas, continued discharge of the Clackamas Basin is a dead end. And then we cannot continue to, so we have to go someplace else. And that seems to be the Sandy River. And then, you know, but then we have to decide how it's gonna get into the Sandy River. Are we gonna put it in a wetland like we saw at Fern Hill and treat it there, are we gonna put in a pipe? Are we gonna?
Golf course.
You know, use it for the fish hatchery, are we gonna irrigate something with it, who knows? So, uh, I think we need to, the recommended, uh, process is to adopt the plan and the basin. Uh, and then the, kind of like the how and the what you were discussing earlier, is how we do it will be with the, uh, five hundred thousand we have from the legislature for the, in the budget note. And so they'll, and the good thing about that is too, there'll be more opportunity for public comment again, you know, when we kind of do the phase two or the phase one point five of this process. Where we look, you, the council will, uh, look at the alternatives to, uh, uh, you know, how, how to get the, the treated wastewater into the receiving stream, whether directly or indirectly. Oh, yeah, so the dates are on the last page here. So, um, we have a workshop scheduled for the, uh, sixteenth for the facilities plan and, uh, the utility rate adjustments. And, um, then on the, and we've already, this went out in the most recent utility bill newsletter. And on the October seventh, we would have the, uh, the, uh, hearing on the, uh, SDC methodology. And then, uh, the rate adjustments and then adopt the facilities plan. So with, what we'd recommend is on the sixteenth, you know, we'd have the, um, testimony, close the hearing, council's decision, you can close the hearing, continue it. And then the actual, um, decision would be on the seventh. And that's, you know, your call, you may say, no, we'll leave the record open till October seventh, we're not gonna take the testimony at the meeting, or we're gonna take testimony at the meeting and leave the record open, that's really for you to decide. Oh, that's right, uh, the rate study, I think what we may do is we may have, if we can fit it in, is have a separate. Workshop, maybe the week of the ninth of September with the council, where we would get this rate model set up and you'd see what the proposed rates are. And you could maybe tweak some of the variables and see if that would, what effect that would have on rates. And, uh, the, the nice thing about the rate model, it does have this little simulation window, so you can say, okay, we want to use more debt or more cash on hand. Or we want to push this out five more years, and you can see what impact that has on the rates live. And so once you kind of, and then you probably give it, give us some direction on that, which we've kind of tested some of these options. And then, uh, even the consultant won't be able to make it on the sixteenth, but I think you would have, we'd hope that you'd been able to explore enough, enough options. That you'd feel comfortable having the hearing on the sixteenth, and the staff would be here too, but you kind of had maybe one, two or three options. You know, a high, medium, low, whatever on the, uh, rates, and, uh, then you could have the, the, hear from the public and maybe select from one of those options that would have been reviewed the week of the ninth.
Uh, Counselor Exer.
So how, how reasonable do you think it will be to get those rates if we are, have yet to get the, the result? The plan, I guess, is in my mind, is it gonna become, uh, dump it into Roslin Lake or is it gonna be dumped into, uh, you know, some sort of sewer treatment plant of some kind? Do you, do you see us getting that kind of level of detail complete by this September's meeting at all?
No, 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 we, that would just be, you know, we're asking the council to just choose the recom- you know, the alternative, recommended alternative from the plan where it's, you know, the sandy basin is the discharge alternative. But how it, how we do that would be a separate, uh, phase of that plan that might, you know, be in the next spring.
So how would you come up with a rate then, if you didn't know?
Well, the dollar, you know, the preliminary estimate for the plant and all the, you know, pump stations, pipelines, all this, there's enough room in those. That if things did change, you know, the discharge alternatives changed, would still fit underneath that dollar amount. So we're using that fifty-two million as the, it's what's plugged into the rate model.
Maybe one way, maybe one way to think about it is, we know regardless of what, what option and how we treat it and, and where the discharge goes and all that. It's gonna be a massive, expensive project and we're gonna need to raise rates. Now, as the engineering gets, you know, um, you know, we move along in that process, things get a little more clear, we got the project design. Maybe the rates, you know, tailor off, you know, towards the end, but the, this initial rate increase, we know we're gonna need a pretty sizable one regardless of what we do. Um, cause we have a pretty good, you know, picture on what that range of cost for the entire project's gonna be.
So are you planning on saying those are the rates we're gonna start charging right away, or what, what's your timeframe about starting those rates to the public?
It would, it would be, we would, they would become effective with the bill that customers receive in December.
Yeah.
Wow.
Now when, now when, oh, that's good, that's a good month.
I mean, that's. It's because of the, it's because of the summer, uh, your, your bill goes up in the summer, right? You're using more water and everything, so instead of, you know, it's actually smoothed out a little bit better.
This will still be a pretty big.
Yeah, yeah, smoothed out this way.
So when you, uh, and I'm sure, I, I guess I should probably wait till you're presenting the methodology for this, but, you know, like, we're up for the WIFIA, right?
That's the bigger variable.
Right.
So with WIFIA, you know, we wouldn't have to start even making payments until five years after completion, which then takes that timeline and really spreads it out. So how are you factoring that in, if at all? Maybe you're, and I, I'm the one that tends to try to plan for worst case in ours, maybe you're planning to not get it. But how, what, what factor is that playing in this?
We are using the WIFIA loan, the term, uh, the interest rate and that five-year, you know, forgiveness period where you don't have to.
Yeah.
Start making debt service payments until five years after the project's complete, so those, that's all figured into the model right now.
So if we don't, uh, get that, whether it's this year, next year, whatever, you know, cause we can apply for it more than once, guys, right? Um, if we don't get it, then we're gonna have to restart, we're gonna have to relook at the rates.
Well, I think we can do that, you know, the week of the ninth, if we have a workshop meeting then, we would have the consultant here with the model live and they can say, here's what is with the WIFIA financing. Here's, here's the worst case, you know, but really, there's not a lot of daylight between the WIFIA loan and, you know, just revenue bonds. Now, bond price, it's a sweet time to go out and to sell municipal bonds right now. And, uh, the, the only, the biggest advantage of the WIFIA loan is the longer term and that five-year grace period. Why?
Okay.
Ray?
The benefit to the model to the FCS group that's working out is that we can, we can go through there and pull ourselves, we have. So as the project goes on, we'll have to get FCS out here, get the presentation, um, we'll have that flexibility to turn over the, the payment.
It's very detailed, I mean, we can plug in pers rates and payroll and power costs and, you know, it's more detailed than we really need, but.
Well, one thing I'd be curious about, and I don't think you'll have an answer tonight, maybe you will, maybe you won't, but like, let's say we go down this green alternative and it turns into these beautiful sandy parks and stuff. If it does become part of our park system, does, does this need to be incorporated at all into the Parks and Trails master plan? Does there need to be any conversation and?
Uh, um, it's a good question, uh, sure.
A good question for the consultant.
There's plenty of models like that where, you know, say the Portland Water Bureau, you know, owns Pal Bute, but the Parks, uh, Department runs it, you know, or maintains it, like, um, yeah. And I, I, I mean, remember we're five, six years from constructing some of these bigger, you know, ideas than just pipes and stuff, so we have time to think about that.
But that's a good point though, you know, you know, we'll know, like, is it gonna be, we're gonna bore this pipe in, is it gonna be an open cut? You know, people see anything on the surface, will they not, you know, those kinds of things. You know, those, we can answer those questions and as part of the Parks Master Planning process, so we're kind of on this, you know, on the same track.
And if, yeah, if we're going this direction, do they need to be scoping out? Or maybe we scope it out on our end and they eventually do an intergovernmental agreement, where they, anyway, so something to be kind of thinking about as we move forward, yeah.
I was just gonna make a motion when, when we were done.
I'm good.
Everybody had all the discussion they want. So I'll make a motion to approve the plan to split the, split the facilities plan adoption and finalization process into two tracks. One, adopt recommended, recommended alternative and two, select preferred discharge alternative after further analysis.
So, quick question, are we in a works workshop or work session, do, are we gonna actually vote on something?
Uh, well, I think we just want direction, does the schedule look good?
I apologize.
And splitting it up look good?
Cause we didn't really like end our regular meeting.
Meeting, yeah, so that's why I thought we had to do a motion, so.
We kind of just embedded a work session item in the council meeting.
I see how it is.
Yeah, yeah. No, we were just looking.
So we're still in a council meeting.
But on the agenda is seeing if a work session, which my rules would not.
Right.
So you're just looking for some response from us?
Or direction, do you like, do you like the schedule, do you like to split it up?
Do it.
September sixteenth, October seventh.
And then by November, Roslin Lake is back?
Is that what this is?
Is that, oh, no.
When do we have paddle boats, when's that happen?
I can see you out there, actually paddling through a coupon. We change the name of. We change the name of all the stuff.
coupon, Mike.
Yeah, coupon, coupon.
No, we gotta get better at branding here, buddy. Yeah, yeah. We call it a big brand. All right. Don't damn love your, your counselor report. Your manager report. I don't think you want up here.
Yeah, um, thanks, Mike. Um, just a couple of things to add to that. Um, hopefully you got your utility bill. You saw some of the information that we're getting out about the wastewater project. Uh, there's more to come on that. We have a firm on board that's helping with the communications, um, social media posts. We're coming out, um, a lot around the rates, right? We want to make sure the public really understands, uh, the situation. I think, uh, we've had a lot of coverage in the Sandy Post and, um, obviously council conversations, multiple presentations about the preferred alternative and the facilities plan. So, um, it's helpful, um, having some communication support on that. Uh, we do have a meeting with DEQ, um, coming up, uh, I think next week. The sixteenth, um, to again, uh, talk with them about, uh, the wastewater treatment plant and our facilities plan and, um, talk with them about the updated timeline. Um, thinking of this at summer because no violations that I know of recently, you know. Well, okay, never mind. No promises.
Cause you don't have any, right?
There might have been an excursion on the, uh, earlier this week. Oh, she had one of the clarifiers, a very tiny exceedings of the, uh, oh, farm count at the nursery.
Okay.
At the nursery, not in, not in the city?
Good to, just a reminder, we need to move on this stuff.
As these conversations with DEQ progress, as if they get more intense, I mean, I, I think it might help to bring in, uh, you know, a representative or the governor's office or something to try to, you know, play mediator a little bit on some of this stuff.
You know, um, it's, it's a good, good idea. Honestly, we've had a pretty good relationship with DEQ. Um, and we continue to want to have a good working relationship. They're going to be the permitting agency. Um, you know, they're obviously very interested in the project. They've been, you know, willing to work with us. They understand the situation. They know that we're making progress. They know we're considering these huge rate increases. Um, and they've been supportive with the loans and things too. So, um.
Just keep it in your toolbox.
Yep. Um, uh, thanks for the good conversations tonight on the community campus. It's helpful to give that direction. Um, uh, earlier before the meeting, I heard a conversation about the League of Oregon Cities Conference. Uh, it was one of the things on my list to make sure we're all, um, in sync there. Um, Carrie, I think found out today, we did get the hospitality suite. Um, so Mayor, something to think about with your counselors is, uh, what do you want to do with, with that? Um, and kind of show off and, and so, uh, we do have rooms.
It sounds like a.
I think it sounds, it sounds like a red shed or sort of, sort of conversations.
That's a why.
Yeah, that's, that's out there now. Um, yeah.
We putting that together.
Yeah. That's it. It's been a busy summer.
Anything happening tomorrow night?
Anything happening tomorrow night?
That was on my list. Is there any way that ca, the counselors can engage and participate in the, uh, national night out?
Host your own.
Oh, yeah. Um, yeah. So that's why I know it's, I actually don't know how many people have, how many neighbors have signed up. I forget that number. Um, but, uh, yeah, the police department's involved with, uh, going around to the different neighborhoods that have, um, signed up for block parties. Um, it's a great opportunity, just like the Long State Parkway to get out and meet your neighbors and, um, you know, uh, meet your local public safety officers. Um, it's something that communities across the state that you do. Um, so, and also if you haven't picked up a blue light, uh, stop by City Hall or the police station. I don't know if there's any left, but, um, part of the way to support, uh, the police department and the Council of the National Night Out is, uh, there's blue lights that you can pick up that have as the outdoor lights, uh, for that evening.
Oh, it's one of the times I've had them on my house for three years. So.
Are they red?
They're blue.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you for the reminder.
Good. Counselor Shaws.
No, nothing to report tonight.
Counselor Exner.
Um, I will not be there tomorrow night. It's my forty-third anniversary. So.
Congratulations.
With my wife and we're not going to be around much. Uh, we're not going to be gone all more than just the evening. So, I hope you do that. The Forstry Code meeting will start up again, or is it the twenty-seventh? Is there something going on here that I didn't see?
You're good.
Okay. Uh, the Forstry Code meeting is going to start back up again on the twenty-seventh of this month. Hopefully jump into some really solid stuff this time and trying to set up that as a preliminary, getting ourselves in the right, um, uh, baseball field and trying to figure out where that should be. Hopefully we'll give some details and be able to report back to the council, uh, after that, shortly after that. But, uh, I see that as coming down the road. As far as the, um, the Art Council, you'll notice we're doing renovation of the old Roger Cook spot over here in Mule. Really appreciate that. Those gals are just charging on. Also Ace Hardware donated a bunch of, uh, monies as well, paints, I think it was. And as well as, uh, the man left, woman left, excuse me.
Person left.
It was, it's woman left right now. So there's only two ladies, three ladies doing this.
I think you just call it Ivy List, didn't you?
So thank you for those ladies. I had a conversation with a person who owns Rosin Lake right now, this past two weeks ago. Uh, it's his trackers. Uh, his name is Tony Dees. Uh, we had probably a two-hour conversation. I wasn't expecting to be there half an hour, but, um, we have become close friends. This guy really is excited about the possibility of having a new lake, whether it be treated or mostly treated, uh, water into the lake. Uh, he's got all the things that would go with his particular, uh, company would work very well. In fact, he said he would also drink the second cup of water that comes out of the toilet.
Yeah, I get the first.
Of course, yeah. I told him that he was, you're going to do that. He said he would drink the second one. So, don't know if that's going to work very well for me. I don't think.
Don't you, your insurance premiums are paid that month.
I suppose John wouldn't be there either. So I'm really excited. Then I went, had a chance to talk too, because Tony had said that he is in close communication with the power company, the gen, the people that own the PGE Power Company and had a conversation with that lady. And she is very excited about being able to see water go through the power generation thing again. Now that the turbines work, I was surprised that that was true. But the Penn Stock that goes from the Rosin Lake down to the, you know, they're just full of concrete. So there's not much chance there. But there's more than enough room on the sides of them, I guess, to put in more water, crops and all that kind of stuff. So I'm very excited. And then I had my, all my hopes and dreams just dashed. Had a chance to talk with Portland Water Bureau.
I was going to say, you're going to have to have that conversation.
And, uh, there's a couple of things we're going to have to do. To the point we can start going through water coming out the other side.
That dumps into the bull run.
It's just, there's a lot of stuff there. Uh, so, uh, but in all, I think that, uh, those kind of contacts have been made. Those two organizations are very open to the fact that we might be able to do something in that respect. And I think that that's really going, I just can't imagine how much better that might be to have wetlands with birds and fish and people watching all that stuff. And, uh, we were, Tony and I were talking about the, um, how to share volunteer, uh, buildings and people. And it's just, he's very excited about making this happen. So I, to me, that was a really, a really nice, uh, conversation that way. Um, lots of work to be done now before that gets put into place though. So exciting times. Think that's, uh, it from me.
Yep. Counselor Lee.
Yes, I went to the C four meeting and people are getting lined up now to access money for affordable housing. Um, and there is quite a bit of money that the county has set aside for projects for people that are in metro. So there's a couple of possibilities for us, but if we're going to do something, we should probably think about it pretty soon because the money is going out the door even today. Um, one of them that was, one idea brought up that I hadn't heard about before was that one thing that you could do with the county money in a rural city is buy into some multiple housing or some kind of project that a developer is going to do, buy it down, um, so it could be leased. So that would be a far cheaper way to go than some of the other ways. But there is also, the county has some property where they're putting a health facility. And there's been some discussion about whether or not there could be worker housing in, as part of that project. So I don't know how much the city has looked at that as an option.
Yeah, where, um, where are they looking at?
Well, they just bought it.
Yeah, they, I don't know where housing.
Uh, there's a lot, uh, it's part, that's currently part of the church, uh, right across the street. That they're, uh, they're purchasing for some additional parking. But also there's been conversations that Counselor Lee's alluding to about, um, mixing this project with, um, some more forced housing and stuff.
Champion and industrial.
I happened to have a conversation with Jim Bernard this afternoon when I was in the meeting with, uh, moving out around the river. And I mentioned that very project and he didn't know what we're talking about.
No, he's the one that told me about it. I told him.
And he said, well, connect with, um, I wrote down the name, but says there's somebody in his office.
Jim Bernard.
The Chair of the Commissioners for the County of Clackamas, right?
Yeah, better to talk to Jill Smith than to project.
Uh, yeah, anyway, sorry.
That's all.
Uh, no committee reports, but just wanted to thank city staff for approving our permit for our neighborhood for the night out tomorrow night. So we're not one of the four sanctioned events, but I did reach out to the, uh, police and fire chief. No, but, um. So I'd see if we can get some of those, but did send an email to the chiefs, uh, to see if they could do a, a stop by. But, uh, went through the process of getting a permit, uh, getting signatures and all that. So we're going to close down Hood and Fur and Hood Court tomorrow from five thirty-eight. So I got a whole bunch of Costco hamburgers and hot dogs and veggie burgers. So if you get hungry, don't come to my neighborhood.
Are you going to put lights out or anything?
No, but we have a little bit of music. We're going to do some cornhole. We're going to have a kids' bike parade.
Wow.
Yeah.
I don't really have anything. I'm assuming you're going to talk about TGI and whatnot. So, well, still you're under on that.
Um, I'd have a contact with the, uh, the Dow, uh, the city of the DOWs, uh, Parks and Recs District. He's the director out there. Just happened to be for two days, put together a very complicated, um, play structure at our kid's school. Uh, one of us showed up at it. Uh, I didn't see the mayor there. It was very complicated. I learned a lot about putting together park, um, play, ground equipment and equipment you buy and equipment you don't even offer up as a, something you could buy. This one was very hard to put together. Uh, but he volunteered his, his weekend, more than a weekend, to come over and build, uh, and be kind of the expert on that in our community and didn't, you know, just some friends that asked him to come over or volunteered to do that. And so, but, you know, started talking about some of the things I did in, um, and what he did. Asked what he did. And, um, he's like, yeah, anytime, give us a call, come over. You know, they're, um, they have a district over there and what they went through and they have a pool as well. Um, it's an outdoor pool and opened only a part of the year, not the entire part of the year. A little bit different weather. In that same group of people though, uh, there's another lady that lives in town who works for the Forest Service. Um, and when she heard that I was on the, uh, city council, she started talking about trees. And so I didn't know if there's still someone on the tree ordinance committee or if there's openings on it or anything like that. But, um, has a lot of expertise with that. It was, um, talking a lot about, um, the trees. And she knows Kathleen, worked with Kathleen in the past, but, uh, who is right on Hood Street here and one of our community members is, uh, knowledgeable that. Um, so I think if there is any openings out there, let her know to apply. But, um, if, uh, that is cool, but also on the parks, I don't know if there's any openings left on the parks committee or not. But, uh, she might be interested in that.
You can give, hem your name, um, and add a contact. I'd like to contact her about some things.
Sure.
I think that the city needs to do something about their trees, some of their inventory and that kind of thing. And there's, I know there's nothing in the money and there's no time or anything, but I've got a number of folks who are next.
She didn't know anything about these committees or anything like that. She just, uh, wanted to let me know that there is a lot of unhealthy trees in many parks that, um, need to be dealt with, that, uh, an arborist would not have told you they need to come down or need to be pruned or whatever. But, uh, uh, her background is that. So, um, uh, the economic development, uh, Carl and Mayor and I and Jordan and David Medigan, um, as we're whittling down, um, trying to get some names here so we can get that approved and move forward with that, uh, committee. Um, and then I'm meeting with another, uh, business owner in town tomorrow, wants to talk about some sandy style and some other things. So, um, we will report more on that, uh, in our next meeting.
All right, great. Um, first, thanks, uh, uh, Counselor Lee for attending Thursday's Clackamas County Coordinating, uh, meeting. I wasn't there because we were spending our ten-year wedding anniversary in beautiful Medford, Oregon. Uh, the Oregon Mayors Association Annual Meeting, you know, it was very cool. It was in a revamped motor inn on my ten-year wedding anniversary. Kinsy was really happy about that. Um, but it was a great meeting, uh, had the chance to, uh, talk to Primeville Mayor Steve, uh, Olfman, who we actually spoke to, if you remember at City Day at the Capitol at that reception that evening. They are kind of the first big test case to do some of these green alternatives in Oregon for their wastewater treatment. And I'm just throwing this out there again. So I'm going out there in a couple of weeks to meet with him to play a round of golf on the first ever municipally owned golf course that's fully paid for and maintenance and water with wastewater treatment, uh, uh, water and funding. It actually makes fifty thousand dollars a year. Only cost them twelve million dollars to put this whole thing all together. So.
It makes fifty grand a year.
Uh, and it makes fifty grand a year. The secret, I guess, is leasing out the restaurant to not actually running the restaurant as a municipality. So if there's any golfers out there, if anyone wants to make the trip to Primeville, play a round on it with me, let me know. But it was pretty cool to hear about. Also left the meeting wanting to tackle our census a lot more. We've had some conversations, um, offline and Jordan and I went to meet in Clackamas County with some of the different mayors and, uh, managers. Uh, I just, I'm looking to have a real community effort on that. The count for our set census is really important with some of these state and federal dollars that we're going after. Um, I think that we are, uh, big enough where we want to get a good count and small enough that we should be able to affect it in person to person doing a, a community effort to get a good count. So it's going to be a priority. And we've talked about in the future meeting, having them actually come and present to us and kind of get some thoughts on it. Um, so, uh, as Lori mentioned, Greater Portland Inc. came out, visited with, uh, Counselor Smallwood, Jordan Willer, uh, Davis Snyder and I. Uh, we went through a lot of our growth opportunities for some of those west end properties at Bell Street. Talked about the Bell Street connection, talked a lot about the Sandy Community Campus, a little bit about the Sandy Style and kind of what that means for businesses and business growth and those kinds of things. And then, um, uh, David, uh, went on, uh, drove around, did a tour so they could actually kind of get a good physical feel for it. Uh, so between that and, and I'll mention, right around that time, we had Representative Anna Williams and Senator Chuck Thompson come out, participate in a chamber election learn. And afterwards, Representative Williams came and had a, uh, meeting, uh, with Counselor Exner and, and, uh, Jordan, our different department heads and was able to get that data on some of the things going on in our community. And then I took her afterwards, ran her staff on a tour afterwards. So the idea behind this and all these meetings is, is eventually someone's in a meeting hearing about available funding or a project that can collaborate, uh, have my synergy of some of the things we're trying to do. And they're going, okay, in Sandy, I remember this meeting, right? Um, I think Representative Williams had a great time out here and is pretty jazzed to go get some more funds for us. So. Uh, ODOT meeting on the bypass, we're going to have that here next, uh, week on August eighth at nine AM in their Northwest Portland offices. Right now, uh, myself and Jordan, I think, I don't know if Mike was going to go or not.
Is it next week or this week?
Is it August eight?
Oh, my gosh. It's this Thursday. It's this Thursday. It's a day's away. If a counselor would like to go, please just reach out, let me know. Uh, but it's going to be at nine AM in Northwest Portland for that. So what we're going to be discussing is basically is, okay, we'll talk about this study. What are we looking for? Where's, you know, all those kinds of things. So, um, community involvement, all, you know, just what, what are we looking for in the study?
Who has the control of that dollar? Do we do or is that ODOT?
ODOT.
So.
They've agreed to pay for it.
So we need to do some pretty good, uh, watchfulness on this thing because it may end up in some engineer's pocket. So we need to do some pretty good, uh, watchfulness on this thing, cause it may end up in some engineer's pocket, uh, big study someplace.
Sure.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, it's already been talked about, national night out, six thirty to eight thirty PM. Um, Sandy, uh, just, we've pushed out the different neighborhoods that it's gonna be in. Wanted to thank, uh, Counselor Exner, leadership on this wastewater process, already reaching out to all these folks. I mean, this could be a really cool project, so thank you for taking the initiative and really going after it and doing that. Uh, one of the eat things this evening, uh, this weekend was a Sandy High School class of nineteen ninety-nine reunion. So just a little shout out, it's pretty cool growing up here and going high school reunions here in Sandy. Um, I have a couple of questions from the planning report I just wanted to throw out. Uh, so one is there was a comment on, uh, sign code recommendations coming sometimes in the fall. I just wanna make sure we're all, we're getting some of the local business owners involved in that feedback and conversation about what their experiences are with the sign code. Difficulties, good parts, bad parts, the whole thing. Um, and then the other is, is that there was a mention that we're reassessing our path with the, uh, Smith Building. Um, and so I would just, I guess, uh, look for some future conversations about what that means, what, what we're reassessing there on that, on that building. Uh, Sandy Area Chamber of Commerce hosting their morning perk at Ant Farm this Wednesday, starting at seven thirty AM. And they have a reach event next Wednesday, early evening, four thirty PM at Peak Mortgage. Uh, with that, world fa- oh, the world famous and state recognized Boring and Dull Day. This Friday, August ninth. Uh, the Community Boring Association, their annual social, starting at five PM at Boring Station, Trailhead Park. There will be a parade I'll be in at, starting at four thirty. So if any of you guys wanna be in a parade from, uh, that literally is like, like ten feet long. Uh, I hear the mayor of Damascus is gonna be there. It'd be great, so.
Well, there's a lot of conflict in that.
Yeah, right. Uh, and then, uh, the only other item, uh, um, water rights, just at a future work session. You know, there's, uh, with everything going on in Portland, uh, this is not something we need to do with the next like two or three months. But, uh, this, we're gonna be talking water here before too long, drinkable water, right, in our master plan. And there's a lot of counselors here who have not, was not around during the days of talking about our salmon water rights and why we've kind of not engaged those. And some of the political reasons why. And so it would just be nice in a work session, coming down the pike here, just to, even if it's our attorney or so. He comes in and just gives us a little bit of a background on what our water rights are, why we may have walked away from certain ones in the past. Why things might've changed where we'd wanna reengage, maybe they haven't changed, but just some good background for council going into our, our master planning process for that. And with that, I'll just close by saying this was a big evening. You know, you look through our, uh, little work session we had here. And we went through the Sandy Community Campus, Bell Street, three sixty-second, uh, wastewater, uh, facilities, plan adoption. And those are three of our top five major goals that we're working on here. So I'm making good progress. Proud of our staff and council, yes, I'll thank you everybody. With that, I'll adjourn the meeting.